Closures, asset management recognized these rinks and were the best in each service area. The golden nozzle and the best overall, the golden boot. I have the displays back here in a moment. The winners of the 2025 golden nozzle. They put a lot of work into this. And then there's a plaque out here, I think, that has all their names on it. All right, it's a big deal. I'm gonna pass this around. The winners of the 25 golden nozzle represent the best rings in each service area. These rings and teams showed great passion, skill, attention, and detail in customer service. The winner for the 2025 golden boot is awarded to the crews at Logan. Logan had an excellent and consistent sheet of ice. No ice on the boards, picnic tables and benches in various locations to skate up to the, to the rest, let's get up and rest a bit and to change your skates. Garbage and recycling bins and handy locations by the broom ball rink. Uh, snow cleared, three, three bracket, uh, brackets backed from the gates. Uh, snow removed from large areas up to the broom ball players' entrance, bold lines, and no garbage debris in the park. In short, great customer service. And these guys are serious about this stuff. One second, hold on. This is the other one. There's that one. If I dropped it, that would have been bad. Also, so the golden nozzle winners are Logan, that's the northeast service area. Commissioner Mans, North Commons, woo, uh, north service area. Armage Park, southwest service area, yep. Hiawatha School Park, uh, upper south service area. Sibley Park, lower south service area, and Bohannon Park citywide. So congratulations to the amazing staff and the work they've done for our ice rinks that are taken very seriously by residents in the state. So congratulations to the team. They did a great work. I won't pass this on around, but, uh, okay. So the last one, strategic direction E, steward our natural resources. This month, ah, Eloise Butler Wildfire Garden work. This month forestry is highlighting a project at Eloise Butler Wildfire Garden. A forestry crew spent the entire week pruning and removing dead wood, disease, and pest infested trees and hazardous branches hanging over the trails at the garden. This project required lots of teamwork and special care catered, uh, catered to the goals, types of trees, and the environment at the Eloise Butler Wild Garden. Susan Wilkins and Nicholas Purcell from the garden met with the regional forestry foreman Shane Lampman and regional tree inspector Mike Van Heel to discuss the project and make trees and branches for removal. Shane and Mike then did a second walkthrough before any work started to ensure as much work could be completed as possible. Southwest Forestry Crew Leader Ryan comprised of arborists and tree inspectors from both Southwest and regional Ryan Vols, Casey Snyder, and Alex Plots. Many of the trees at the garden are quite large and valuable. These trees promote the unique wildlife habitat to aesthetic, uh, and aesthetic found at the garden. Fracture pruning and, uh, coronet cuts were also used to achieve the goal of keeping as much live wood and promoting as much growth on the matured trees as possible. These cuts mimic the jagged edges of naturally broken branches to help promote, um, epimoric branching as well as retain woodpecker habitat. In addition to special pruning and techniques, special care was taken to avoid large, heavy equipment in the area. So all. Articulture loader, last, last sentence. Different trees in different environments sometimes need a different approach to healthcare and maintenance. And the techniques and considerations from this forestry crew show the superior work quality that has been, has come to be experienced of the NPRB forestry department. So there's a lot of stuff to share, but this is the important work they do every day. Incredibly skilled folks. The last two things, I have 10 minutes here. This is really exciting for me. I'd like to introduce a couple of our new and amazing wonderful staff. Mr. Barch, where are you? Director Barch, oh, you're gonna come up here. Yeah. Introducing Jack Bartz as the new director of Aquatics Program Manager for close to three years. I'd like to congratulate Jack Bartz for 25 years of service. You earned this, we're so proud of you. The director of Athletics, Aquatics, Ice, and, uh, yes, congratulations. Yeah, wanna say anything?
Superintendent Pangora, President Bennie, thank you for this opportunity. It's, it's been a fun, interesting, uh, 10 months. I look forward to getting to work. We got a lot of work to do, um, with athletics. Uh, the superintendent mentioned, um, some of the, uh, things that are under development right now, uh, specifically for youth sports. We have a lot of fun things happening with golf. We started hiring, uh, for our aquatics staff for the summer and, and, uh, ice rinks. Um, we have a lot of work to do. So looking forward, uh, to working with all of you and the community and, um, really appreciate the nice read. Thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome. Congratulations, Jack. Very proud of you. I'm sorry, Director Barch. So the next really, really exciting one, uh, we've been waiting for a while for this. Introducing Charles McMaster as the new director of forestry. Charles, is he here? Come on up, Director McMaster. Director McMaster is a distinguished leader in the urban forestry and park management recognized for his commitment, environmental stewardship, and innovative program development. As a dedicated advocate for urban tree conservation, he played a pivotal role in shaping the city of Dallas, Texas forestry initiatives, earning multiple prestigious awards, including the Dallas Park and Recreation Environmental and Conservation Award in 2022 and the International Society for Arbor, Arbor Culture, Texas Chapter Gold Leaf Award for Outstanding Landscape Project 2023. It's a mouthful. His collaborative efforts led to the creation of implementation of transformative programs such as the Urban Forest Master Plan, the City of Dallas Public Tree Inventory and Assessment, the Tree Cycling Program, uh, and the Dallas Historic Tree Program, which introduced the first eight historic tree sites in the city. Under his leadership, the Branching Out Program added over 10,000 trees to Dallas parks, significantly enhancing the urban canopy. In addition to his role at the city forest of the city of Dallas, he also was a small business owner and served in the U.S. Marine Corps. He earned a bachelor's degree in business administration from East Texas A&amp;M, uh, University. He has also served as a board member for several volunteer organizations, including the Texas Historic Coalition, Historic Tree Coalition, the Trinity Backlands Urban Forestry Council, and the Southwest Park and Recreation Training Institute. He is looking forward to working with a highly dedicated and diverse team of park and forestry professionals to steward our natural resources and bring the benefits of trees to every community in Minneapolis. Everything that we do is in service to generations of Minneapolitans. I am highly, um, anticipative, um, of getting into the community and introducing our team and their work for all they see and appreciate. Great work has been done in Minneapolis, and I feel fortunate to be part of the team that continues to leave a legacy of sound and sustainable forestry practices. Director McMaster, congratulations and welcome to Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I mean, because, uh, that was a lot, you know. I, I guess I kinda said it there already, right? Um, I wish I could follow Jack and, and talk about, um, all this work that we're, we're doing. And I'm just kinda getting plugged into everything going on around here. And, uh, I think the, the most important thing, the thing that, that kinda carries over is, I've always dedicated my life and what I do to service of the community. And I, and I do that through bringing the, the benefits, uh, health benefits of trees to every single community that I serve. And so that's what I'm here to do, um, and I'm excited to, to kinda get stuck in and, and start working. And, uh, I just wanna say to the board and, and the executive team, just thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'm ready to get to work.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. President Forney, uh, President Forney, President Bennie. I was doing really well. President Bennie and Commissioners, uh, that's all I have. And if there's any questions, we are available, uh, to answer. Uh, thank you for your time.
Yeah, are, are there, um, questions? Commissioner Mans.
Thanks. Um, I do have some questions. Um, I know we're pushing on the time here. Um, so with the, I, I really appreciate the, the letter, um, that was written to the community. Uh, I, I think that there is some, some real positive momentum. Uh, looking out, I mean, there's so many people here that over the last few weeks I've, I've seen and met with, and also people who I've, I've worked with. I mean, this room is amazing today. I think that this is an amazing, um, way to push this board in a direction that, that, that we need to go. I, I think that the letter responds to, um, some work that the community, myself, Commissioner Rucker, uh, did have done right now in order to set, create this rec open division, which, uh, offers an intermediate option also for, um, for athletes, which is incredibly important in NPRBU sports. We also have Jack who's coming on, who, who gets this. So in response, are we gonna have, I, I guess my question for you, because this is more of a petitions and communications, what, what is the meeting schedule? What is the plan for, for meetings with the community groups, with partner agencies, with the groups that are directly impacted, um, by this, by our new centralized registration system? And also with some of the councils that, that have been impacted by this registration system? And how it's changing that?
Thanks for the question, President, uh, President Bennie and Commissioner Mans. We're working through that now. We're gonna be setting up a time. We promised, as we talked in, uh, the meeting we had with these wonderful people, um, of an opportunity for, it was an opportunity for us to kinda get together too, for me to be able to actually hear them and for Jack and Tim to be sitting in the room too and being able to, uh, work through this. Um, we're gonna work through this. We're gonna put together something that's gonna make sense for all of us. We clearly have seen the, um, the resolution that we, that you had put forward and all the specifics. Um, we're, we're gonna work through all that to make sure that we are in step together going forward so we can bring to the board at any point, whatever the board so chooses, all the work that we're gonna do together to make sure that we are providing the services, the league, the play, all the things that have been asked for, that we have a chance to go through this together in the next several months. Uh, the big push that I know that you mentioned there was the, the fall of 2025, because we know that goes into all the seasons, football, basketball, those things. And so we have the time to get there. So this is very important for us as, as an organization to work in coalition with our partners and across all of our staff and bring to the board a really thoughtful and very clear expectation that we all are comfortable and are good with. So we're gonna do that work going forward. Um, so we're gonna set up a time with all of this group. We're gonna meet on a regular basis, and it's just the start of a relationship that we're gonna continue. And I'm very excited about that, cause this is a great opportunity for us and to see this grow and to be able to build. So we're working to it, working through it. So, uh, we're excited about that work.
Well, well, I know, I know the Commissioner Rucker and myself are, are expecting to be involved in that work as well, because, uh, as, as much as the community is holding us accountable, it's our job to hold our staff and the superintendent, specifically the superintendent accountable. And, and we are, we are dedicated to do that. Um, I'm not gonna read the resolution right now, cause we have to go to, uh, open time. Uh, but I do want my colleagues to know that I think that, that there is a, there is a structural problem here where we, we aren't able to really discuss things in committees. And I think that we could, we could help that along in, in the future and, and trust that we can do that.
Thank you. I think, I think we're directing questions to the superintendent and so we'll come back to you if you, did you still wanna make a comment, Commissioner Rucker? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, go to open time. So just since there are so many people in the room, so we have our 5:30 open time. We, once I know how many people will speak, and I'm gonna read some rules, I'll know how much time. But we do have a 6:00 PM, um, time certain public hearing. So if we get to the 6:00 PM mark and we haven't, we still have speakers, we'll pivot, but then we will come back. So I can explain that again, but that's what we'll do. So I'm gonna start reading here. Thanks for those of you who have come to speak during tonight's open time. The board's open time rules are as follows. Okay, thank you. Um, I will call on people from the speaker list only. Names are added to the speaker list by calling in before 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting or by adding it in person at the board meeting before 5:30 PM. The allotted time for all speakers shall not exceed 15 minutes. We have 26 speakers, so we'll do a minute per person. So that means we're gonna actually go to, you know, 30 minutes or so. Um, signed up tonight, so each person will have up to one minute to speak. Time may not be transferred to someone else, and please watch, there's a timer. Please stay within your allotted time. This is an opportunity for you to address the board. We, we are listening, but we don't respond. That said, please don't hesitate to contact any of the commissioners for, uh, dialogue and further discussion. To protect the privacy of individuals, please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues or pending litigation. Discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone will not be tolerated. And each speaker is asked to state their name and where they live. So with that, I'll begin calling the names. Um, first name is Ellen Van Iwarden. And then the next name is Gary Spears.
Thank you, President of Bennie and Commissioners. My name's Ellen Van Iwarden, and I live in East Isles. I'm the Vice President of the East Isles Neighborhood Association. I'm here to encourage you to vote to modify Resolution 2024-85 regarding the easements the park board has granted to the Met Council for work to be done in the Mall Park. This agenda item, which I understand was initiated by park staff, is the right thing to do. Before and since the adoption of the master plan, neighbors around the Mall Park have expressed concerns about the plan's proposed road closures and public safety. There are two concerns, the serious public safety concern that even the existing road design and the design after the master plan doesn't adequately, um, accommodate fire equipment. And second, closing those roads would drive traffic, both bicycle and car traffic, to dangerous Lagoon Avenue. Um, by implement, by not implementing this portion of the master plan gives the park staff time to, um, deal these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the minute. Um, the next name is Gary Spears, followed by Rachel Ulfers.
Hello, my name is, uh, Gary Spears there. Uh, I'm from, uh, Crow Creek, uh, South Dakota, which is my mom's side of the family. Uh, we've been on, uh, for about past 38 months, been trying to get this, uh, name, Chanteteez Awion, uh, changed over from Sibley Park, which is an offensive racist name, yet, uh, it still stands out there today. Um, we're pleased, asking the park to remove that. Uh, immediately, we also are, uh, working with Noway Center School, which is, uh, mostly from Little Earth Community here, and I see a lot of people here for Red Bears. Um, we, we are, we are trying to, um, put on a powwow this May. And then May 4th is the time when Dakota was exiled, all Dakota were exiled, uh, out of Minnesota. And so, but that was, by the way, of Sibley, and that, that thing's still sitting there 38 months, uh, later. Um, so we, we, uh, we please ask you guys to, uh, remove those, uh, signs off there and signs off the building and signs off in front of the park there. It's extremely offensive to our native community. Uh, mass, largest mass execution in U.S. history, uh, doesn't represent, uh, this city today. And I'd hope you guys, as, uh, city council members, please listen.
Thanks, thank you. Rachel, Rachel Ulfers is, oh.
Um, Itakuiapi, that means all my relatives in the Dakota language. I'm a veteran teacher in social studies, uh, from, from Minneapolis. And, um, most of the time I worked in Robbinsdale, because their policy is welcoming, uh, teachers at the door. And, uh, I refrain from teaching in Minneapolis, cause I've had several attempts to, um, discredit me and take away my teaching license. I teach Dakota language with, uh, K through 12, and I've been told I don't need my language anymore by teachers. Uh, I'm a, uh, Dakota historian, and I'm telling you right now, when I did my research, uh, you don't know the, all the atrocities that occurred under Sibley. And we're in the 21st century, and we need to change this.
Thank you.
Oh, huh.
Okay, Rachel, Rachel Ulfers, followed by Carl Ulfers.
Hi, I'm Rachel Ulfers, 339 West Elmwood Place. Um, I am here representing, uh, Fast Pitch Community, um, 612 Fast Pitch, as well as Washburn High School in, uh, specific. I just wanted to thank especially President of Bennie and Commissioners Mans and Thompson for extra supporting the softball community. We're super grateful for the 300 and thousand, $300,000, um, starting this year, moving forward to help to expedite the equity improvements at all of our softball fields. We're super thrilled, especially that, um, our high school is able to play on Boston 6 and 7 with the use of the temporary semi-permanent fences. And also that Nieman 3 and 4 will be able to be used by Roosevelt and South. That's huge, and like, we just can't even express how thrilled we are. And we're also very, very thrilled about the commitment that you've made for improvements at Todd Park and Lyndon Hills, um, perk with the Minnesota Twins. We're curious how your interactions with MPS, um, will go partnering with any improvements that you're able to find with them, because we have been unsuccessful so far.
Thank you. Um, Carl Ulfers, followed by Ellery Ulfers.
Well, I guess the Ulfers family got on the list. Um, great to see all of you and, uh, greatly appreciative, uh, for all the partnership we've had over the course of the last couple of years. Um, President Bennie, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Mans, uh, you guys have been great partners to the community to work through frankly, a very messy situation as it relates to the state of our, uh, fast pitch fields in the city. And I wanted to come here and express gratitude, um, on my behalf, uh, and our families and our communities. Um, I've been a coach for 612. I'm currently a board member for 612, and then I have run the Booster Club for Washburn High School from a fast pitch perspective. And the strides that we're making, I cannot stress how important they are to the players, uh, that show up each and every day and, uh, will now have the opportunity to play on fields that reflect the level of effort and, um, uh, work that they put in to the game themselves versus when, what they have in the, in the current state. So I thank you and really look forward to the next steps coming out of the meeting tonight and, uh, driving this forward.
Thank you. Um, Ellery Ulfers, followed by Rachel Dion.
Hi, my name's Ellery Ulfers. I wanted to say, like, especially thank you to President of Bennie and Commissioners Thompson and Mans for your continued support of me and all the other softball players. Uh, this is my second year being a captain of the Washburn softball team. I've been on the team since eighth grade, I'm a junior, and I've been playing softball in Minneapolis since fourth grade. Um, last year was the first year that we were ever able to have, like, portable fences and fences that were put up. And it felt like we were finally not a second thought after all those years where I've never played in Minneapolis on a field where we had the right dimensions or the right anything. So thank you for that.
Rachel, Rachel Dion, followed by Vinnie Dion.
Tonsay, Getanaskamotan, Ananaskamotan, Obsis, Nanahiwak, Obsis, Rachel Dion Thunder. I say hello and I say thank you. I say thank you to my relatives that are here today. And I'm here to speak truth. And the truth is that that letter is a good step. That that letter is a good step in a bigger story and a bigger issue. The bigger issue is, is that we, all of these parks, this land that we stand on is unceded, stolen Dakota land. All of these parks that are public domain should be stewarded and taken care of by the original people of these lands. There should never be an issue if our youth can play on these lands. And it should never be a question, because our people should be sitting on this board. And it should be you coming to us, asking permission to make these decisions and these policies. And we will be back for not only the Red Bears, but all of these issues. For land back, for name changes, and for our youth. Thank you.
Vinnie Dion, followed by Crow Belcourt.
Bonjour, everybody. My name is Vin Dion. Um, born, I'm a Native American, Ojibwe, Nishnabe, born and raised here in South Minneapolis. Um, grew up playing sports for the Little Earth Sports Teams, um, through the park board. And one thing I just wanted to say was the importance of us as native people, all the traumas that we've been through in our lives, the need for us to stay together. And this is why I support the Red Bears and I support the other teams. Um, like I said, for myself, I always had the generational trauma where I didn't feel good enough to go play for another park. So I always played for Little Earth. That's where I felt comfy. I still do. You see me walking with all these native men right here? That's where I feel comfortable at. Thank you.
Crow Belcourt, followed by Renita Fay.
Bonjour, Ande Gendigunakas, Tachagundudan, Makinsandau. My name is Crow Belcourt. My address is Turtle Island, and whichever park I damn well want to lay my head, cause it's our land. I played for Little Earth in the mid, uh, 1980s for Coach Tom Holmes. We were the Little Earth Braves at the time. And after Coach Tom Holmes was our last speaker, Coach Vin Dion. And after him, we have Coach Mukwa Roberts, who's coaching our young people right now. And I, I stand behind him. And I also know another coach who, who helps in his community. A.J. Flowers is here. I support him and all his work with young people. And I'm just here to support that. I've seen Gary Spears up here speaking on Sibley. And if you read up on Sibley, his name should be gone, gone for good, erased from our history books. We don't need to be teaching our children that. They call it critical history or whatever you wanna call it, but it's not. Get rid of it. Support the Red Bears.
Renita Fay, followed by Adelaide. Renita Fay.
It shouldn't take three years to change a name.
Good evening, board members. My name is Renita Fay. I live in the Wyndham neighborhood, and I've been a softball coach with 612 Fast Pitch for nearly 10 years and a Minnesota resident for 17 years. I'm the parent of Annika Van Duzen and Calista, both, um, at Southwest and Anthony, both fast pitch players on the Southwest High School JV team. First, I wanna thank, um, President of Bennie and Commissioner Mans and Commissioner Thompson for their leadership and continued support. The $300,000 in annual field operations, funding the immediate improvements at Boston 6 and 7, and the commitment to the premier fields at Todd and Park and Lyndon Fields are critical steps forward, and we truly appreciate these investments. As we move forward, I ask four things. Number one, finalize budgets and timelines for Todd Park and Lyndon Hill, Hills be clearly outlined so that we can ensure progress. Number two, the park board explored partnerships with the Minnesota Twins. Number three, access to Boston 6 and 7 be maintained until permanent solutions are in place. And number four, the park board collaborate with MPS once updated plans are released later this week to ensure fast pitch players have equitable field access. Thank you.
Thank you. Adelaide, followed by Tom Pan. Adelaide? Okay, I'll go to Tom Pan, followed by Sherrell Lentem.
I'm Tom Pan. I live at, uh, 5225 Xerxes. I'm, um, I'm with 612 Fast Pitch. I've been the field organizer for five years now. Um, and so, um, I wanna thank President Bennie and Mr. Thompson, thank Commissioner Mans for the improvements that we're seeing. Um, I'm, uh, it, it's, it's good to see that the, the plan is going through. And I mean, I've worked with Jack for three to four years, yeah, organizing fields, and now with Jordan. So it's gonna be really, it's really gonna be nice to see that, uh, the fields are improving and, and how, uh, how, um, we're using our parks. So, thank you.
Sherrell Lentem, followed by George Rowley.
Hello, my name is Sherrell Etam. I am 15, coming from HHYD. Um, I'm here to address the removement of outside programs from the park board, uh, basketball and all sports. As a former player myself, I've played during the park board lead, park board league for around three years, from my whole time starting from HH. It's sad to see that the attempt at removing the route for kids to start sports here at HH. I believe that we should keep all the programs that you guys are attempting to remove in the park board league, because it is a way for them to integrate within the Minneapolis community and to stay within the Minneapolis community as they continue, as they continue to grow and as they continue to go on through these next few years. Thank you for listening to me. May you guys have a great day.
George Rowley, followed by Mike Tate.
Yeah, thank you. My name is George Rowley. Um, I'm a, a volunteer. I was a volunteer coach at Hospitality House Youth Development for about 25 years. And I wanted to just reinforce what Sherrell said, the importance of a community organization in, uh, coaching and, and having a facility and, um, stuff ready for children is very important. I wanted to relay a little story. Um, when I started working at Hospitality House, I worked as a computer lab person. I spent a lot of time there. Baseball season rolled around. Baseball season rolled around, kids I, I worked with for several months came out to the baseball field and it was amazing to see how much the relationship improved once we started coaching. So I, I very much can see the benefit of being able to work in an organization, be part of that community and coaching as well. So I strongly support that letter.
Mike Tate followed by Benicio Mendito John.
Good evening, y'all. I brought my joy, joy bag of toys there. Can everybody just breathe? And then let it go. I just want to let y'all know racism is a choice, okay? Let's keep that 100. None of us was born into this world with races in our soul or in our mind or in our heart, okay? Just think about that. We all came out of mama's womb being just one person and then we created this thing called racism, which is a system that doesn't allow people of all to do anything because of the systems that are put in place. We are trying to fight for all children in this city of Minneapolis through this Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, through the taxpayer dollars to get all our kids playing, get them off the street, running around in cars. Because again, you guys don't see the trauma. We do. And when you see it, you feel it. And you got to do something to change it. And that's all we're asking you to do. It gets to the table with us. We got the ideals. The folks you're talking to, they don't live here. They leave at five o'clock. We have to live with it. Your decisions. We can help you make better ones. Just give us a chance.
Benicio Mendito John followed by Al Flowers Senior. Benicio, I like saying that. Benicio, okay. Al Flowers Senior followed by TJ Valterera.
Papa don't need no help. First, thank y'all. And, and let me start off first thanking everybody that's coming out here fighting for our children. This is a big deal today and it, and it should have been on the top of the agenda. You've got something at the end of the day, they got to go to school tomorrow. We're not going to punish our kids because you put it at the end of the agenda for us to talk. So, but, but at first I'm going to thank Commissioner Mens, Rucker and Superintendent Bangor for getting us right here. Now, as Commissioner Mens said, the meeting needs to begin next week. So I would say that to the superintendent, they need to begin next week. And also the part about the kids, if they have something, what they going to do in that meantime, in that little space time there, I hope those coaches work out some with Superintendent Bangor that they got something to do for them two months where you going to put them on high heaters, if that's the right word. But I, I wouldn't say like my Native American brothers and sisters talk about the stolen land. I always think about, we, we got dragged over here and we got, when we got dragged over here, we had to build on this stolen land. We still haven't got our reparations for building up the White House for what we did. So I, I, every time they say that, I think about what, they didn't bring us here, somebody brought us here that didn't look like us. So when they, what happened in here today, I think it's a big deal. That some might not think it's a win. I think it's a win because I think something going to happen. I'm putting my trust in the superintendent, but I'm really putting my trust in y'all. The coaches, staff, Coach Kelly, Coach Jim, the Red Bear team. I'm putting trust in y'all because it's a case call, I, I've been brother call. That's why the trust that is with us. That's why you got to change. That's why this thing is changing because y'all are here and it don't matter that they don't put something on the end of the agenda. The superintendent just said what we are going to do. And so when we get through with this speaking, leave out of here, this is a victory. This is a victory in Minneapolis for Minneapolis kids. Take this win, take this win as a victory and then let's make something happen, y'all.
TJ?
My name's TJ Valteria. I'm the director of the Little Earth Boys and Girls Club and I'm a coach for Southside Red Bears. You know, there's a scripture that says where there's no vision, the people perish. We are calling this a youth sports issue, but it's much deeper than that. It's a family issue. It's a community issue. For all parties involved, we're working together. We're all youth serving organizations. And when you slap the name Red Bears or Boys and Girls Club or Phelps or any of these great organizations on a building or on a program, there's a standard of excellence that comes with it for our kids. It's not about our own ego. It's not about our own pockets. We save lives. We keep kids out of prison. We keep kids out of grave. This standard is a standard of excellence so more black and brown youth can get what's rightfully theirs, the same opportunities as everyone else. By any means necessary, we keep these kids safe. Our programs are symbols of hope, a debt to our communities. And so I leave you with a question. When people talk about the Minneapolis parks and rec, what kind of legacy will they talk about? Thank you.
Jim Helbert followed by Al Flowers Junior. Jim Helbert.
Good evening again. My name is James Helber and I'm Minneapolis, in Minneapolis with Phelps Activities Council. In coalition with these other NPRB partner agencies, we push for a resolution to the youth sports centralized registration that was drafted by Recreation Committee Chair Charles Rucker. Commissioner Billy Mens finalized Friday, February 28th, in time to be added to tonight's agenda for committee vote. Thank you both for your work. However, we don't see it on the agenda. Superintendent Al Bangor, thank you for your promise that within the centralized registration, that the, within the new rec, there will be a new rec open option for agency partners that is outlined in but not limited to the requirements by the resolution. But no more empty promises to our coalition partner agencies. Vote the resolution in to show unity, solidarity to these marginalized agencies and make the promise of a partner agencies binding.
Thank you. Al Flowers Junior followed by Matt Bricks.
How y'all doing? I'm back again. I told y'all we was light last time. We was going to come a little stronger this time. First and foremost, man, I want to thank all the organizations, all the coaches that stood up and fought for our children to ensure that our children have a place to play. I want to thank the commissioners and I want to thank the Superintendent Al Bangor for y'all even starting the centralized registration because it's amazing, something that was supposed to divide us and marginalize us, actually galvanizing, united us, all of our communities together. We here as a team. We not just here for the African Americans. We're not just here as natives. We're coming here together in solidarity, standing in solidarity. Lastly, to that young man that spoke, I appreciate your words. And to all the children that is out here, I want y'all to know that everybody in here will not stop fighting for y'all. Y'all look around this room right now and understand that everybody in here is in here to fight for y'all children. And I appreciate y'all for standing up for yourselves. Y'all make it easy to fight for y'all. And I'll leave y'all with this right here. Y'all see the children. Y'all see the community that's here. When we got the letter, that's thankful. We're thankful for the start of that. We are still pushing towards getting a resolution so that this can be a binding agreement so that my son don't have to come back up here 20 years from now and fight for the same thing for his children. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Bricks followed by Adeline Uffers.
Thank you, President Abene, Commissioners. My name is Matt Bricks. I am a resident of the King Field neighborhood here in Minneapolis. I am the parent of a fast pitch softball player, fast pitch softball coach, and also the president of 612 Fast Pitch Softball Association. I come here tonight to thank you for the work that you've done to help us create more fast pitch softball fields in the city of Minneapolis. I want to especially thank Commissioners Mens and Thompson and President Abene for your heartfelt efforts to really make sure that our kids have places to play, more places to play that are dedicated to their great sport. We have over 180 kids that have come out for our program this year. We have kids from ages six through 19 that are going to play on 16 different teams this coming spring and summer. And I'm grateful that they're going to be able to start playing on dedicated fast pitch softball fields, starting with Bosun. And I know we'll have other fields for them to play on in the future as well. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Adeline Uffers followed by Rachel Spees.
Hi, I've played softball since I was six and I've been on the varsity Washburn softball team since seventh grade. We play, I play for 612 Fast Pitch and we just want to thank you for making improvements to Boston Six and Seven so that we can play on fields with the correct fences this year. Thank you for doing that and for continuing to work with us.
Thank you. Rachel Spees or Spies, I'm sorry, and Michael Wagner followed by Monica Wagner.
Hi, I'm Rachel Spees. I'm with 612 Fast Pitch. I'm a coach for the program. I was past board member. I'm here today as well to say thank you for committing yourselves to some of the field improvements that have been recently announced. In particular, I'm really excited about the collaboration that is happening with Minneapolis Public Schools. I hope you continue to hold them accountable so that field improvements get to where they need to be. It's refreshing to see student athletes' needs met, well, hopefully met soon for once. And I think that that needs to be a continued goal for both the parks and for MPS together. Part of the technical advisory committee work that we also had provided recommendations for earlier this year were related to field maintenance, not just field improvements. And I think that there's continued, there's a need for continued discussion as to how we will sustain the maintenance of these fields and to be improved fields as that is huge. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to call one more person and then we're going to have to pivot to the other, other meeting for the other open time or other time certain item, but Michael Wagner. And this will be the last person, but we'll come back to this. Michael Wagner.
Hello? Can y'all hear me? My name is Michael Wagner. I live in the Fulton neighborhood in Minneapolis. I am here and part of what I want to say is that I love what is happening here because I talk to my kids all the time. I have a son and daughter in MPS about the importance of local government and the importance of impact that we can have in local government that impacts our daily lives. And I love seeing this. The, the support and people showing up here to talk about the issues that are important to them. I'm here in support of youth sports, specifically my daughter and women's sports in the city of Minneapolis. My daughter plays fast pitch softball and as we've played and as I've coached, we've seen fields in the surrounding suburbs that are leaps and bounds and incredibly so much better than the ones in the city. I want to say that I am gracious and appreciate your support and hope for your continued support in the improvements that can help us compete and have our girls play on fields that are equitable because girl's sports are fantastic and I love my daughter.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to, I'm going to recess the-
Yep, before you recess, because I came here, but that list was gone.
We can add you to the list. I'll get you, I'll, hold on-
Yeah, but I'm not going to be able to come back. So I'm just going to go ahead. So if you got, if you have to, if you have to recess-
Okay, 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 fine.
Cynthia Wilson, former, former employee here. The thing, sometimes the sand says, the more things change, the more they stay the same. My address is 2117 East River Road. I've been coming here and I want to know what the heck is going on with this organization? And I'm coming, I'm coming from all different hats, but this is pathetic. Really, it is. It is a very disheartening taste in my spirit. Having worked for this organization for 34 years, management is constantly getting higher dollars while these kids and our programs are being desolated. It is a sham and a shame and it sickens me. I changed my flight from Boston today. I was supposed to be here tonight. I changed my flight to get here today so I can talk. Al, listen, I came here before and I spoke in favor of you with that house situation, but I got to tell you, I'm very disappointed in you, brother. I am. I'm very disappointed. You got to step up and wear the big drawers, man, and do your job. That's why we paying. $300,000. $300 plus thousand dollars, man. Come on. You can't just sit behind that and be cute. Those days is over. Look around, man. Black and brown folks need your help. You in a position of power. Use it. And don't be pony, uh, ponybacked by Jennifer over here. I feel the same, I feel the same spirit of Jane Miller here. When Meg Forney was here and where Music was here and they, they stamped that she was bullying. It was a hostile work environment. All of those same things are still in existence. People are leaving left and right. You think people are coming to you to tell you guys about how they're feeling on their jobs? I just left three buildings where people are talking about how they're being treated. And you think they're going to come to you guys when you sit back there very dis shuffled, disconcerned, disinterested? Music, you ain't looked up until I just called your name. But you concerned? You want to give people one minute to talk? But you want to hear what they got to say? It take 15 seconds to say the name and their address. So if you're really concerned, give folks some time to talk and really listen. And don't give me this dismissive yes, yes. Okay? Because you said you couldn't talk, you couldn't answer. So just listen. But this is, this is ridic- I will be back. And I will be back with my executive team. And then after my executive team comes back, we will take this to national so the NAAC National can see the racism and discrimination that's been going and has been perpetuated for the last 30 some years. It's a mess up here. And this is election year, y'all. This is election year. Vote these folks up out of here. That's what you do. You vote them up out of here.
It's going to be, we're going to be really quick. Let's just, we're going to just be, we'll be back in like two minutes. What, you know what, we, it'll be- But, but is it okay if we have some bit of a process here? Is it okay if we have some bit of a process? It's cool. Let's just wait. It will be back. I will open the meeting and then we'll, we'll be coming right back. I think if Commissioner Forney can, so, okay. Yeah, we have other people on the list. So, okay, I'm going to recess this. Commissioner Forney, will you open the meeting?
I'd like to convene the planning committee. Would our secretary please call the roll? This is going to take us maybe three minutes. That's all it will take us. Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Alper. Commissioner Rucker. Commissioner Schaefer. Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like approval of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, that action carries. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th.
Sorry. I'll move the minutes of February 5th, 2025.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, that action carries. Okay, we now have a public hearing for the final concept plan for the Phase One improvements at Cleveland Park. Okay, I just want you all to know that there is no one who has signed up. So therefore, I am not going to read the rules that are needed for that and everything. And upon that, then unless there is a need to have a show of what the presentation is, I will then close the open time and recess the planning committee. Okay? There's planning committee. Was that three minutes? Woo, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the next name on this list, I'm going to reopen the full board, okay? And the next name is Peter Schmidt followed by Dawn Ackert.
Evening Commissioners, thanks for the time. I'm here to speak about the Mall Park again, which is something that's very frustrating for me. I've been speaking about the Mall Park for six years now. I was a member, I participated in the CAC process. My wife was on the CAC. My wife actually brought this park forward. It is embarrassing that we are still talking about the Mall Park. This process was not a neighbor association process. That was never part of the park plans, park board's procedure. It was a CAC process. It was an approved, it was a compromise process. The original design for this actually had significantly more removal. If that was a concern then, we already had that, that compromise. And if you talk to the fire chief or any fire members outside of mentioning when it's about a specific park, they are a remarkably flexible group. They actually don't particularly care about the access concerns that have been brought up. And from the parking study, there was no concern here. This is not a high traffic area. This is literally a parking lot for private apartments next to it. And you as the park board have the opportunity to provide more green space at no extra land acquisition cost, which is a rare thing. If we had this turned around and we're saying, hey, we're going to actually take park land and put it into a parking lot, you'd have a lot of people mad about that. Delaying this is literally that. Let's not do that. Delaying this is literally that. Let's not do that. I understand it could come back, but delay is just a way to kill it later. So, please vote against this. Please, let's just move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, Dawn Acker, followed by Nathan Retner.
Hello, I'm Dawn Acker. I live in Bloomington, but I've, I work in Minneapolis in Ventura Park. And I am here to talk about the youth sports. And I am significantly concerned that with cutting youth programs to help them stay in sports, we're gonna have them looking for other places to go. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the streets. They're gonna go to the parks. They're gonna have likely unsupervised care. As parents, work multiple jobs. You kind of get the gist of the snowball effect. And it's, we don't want to have all of our parks in Minneapolis turn out to be like Chicago and Franklin. And having more issues where there's drug issues and other behaviors. I stress to the extreme that you need to keep the programs for the youth sports.
Nathan Retner. Nathan Retner.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Retner. I'm a resident of Minneapolis. I live in downtown. I have been volunteering with the Southside Red Bears for over a decade, and I can attest to the impact that they have made on dozens and dozens of lives, literally changing the course of youth's lives from one that could very easily lead to an early death to one that has lots of promise and opportunity. I'd like to thank the board, as well as the superintendent, for the letter and the commitment to creating an open rec league. I think that's a tremendous opportunity, and for the collaboration with the community that you all see behind me that has led to this. I would like to implore you, though, as you develop this league, to continue this level of collaboration. And once the league is established, to have an oversight committee that is running and designing the league that includes these community members, because they know how best to serve the youth and how to help them live the best lives possible. Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Jolene Jones, and I'm gonna kind of jump in here. I did, I, I thought I was signed up, and I wasn't. So, I appreciate the superintendent and what he's gonna do for our Red Bears. The difference between our teams and the park board teams is we, our coaches are dedicated. They go pick kids up. They do things. Maybe you guys can take a lesson from them, because the park board is not dedicated to their children the way these individual team coaches are. And second of all, I also want to say, Sibley, you need to change the name. Sibley Park, he was, he was in, an officer in the Dakota War that basically killed our people and took their land. You need to change that name. It's a downright insult that that name is still there. You need to change it.
Thank you. So, I have-
Change this, Strong Hard Woman. This is a Dakota word here. Respect it.
Thank you.
My name is Bree. I have an 11-year-old that plays football in the inner city. Um, my reasoning for speaking is because imagine having to sit your children down and say, hey, your coach can't coach you anymore. The person you've been learning from, that father figure, those brothers, you don't get to play with them anymore. They're about to assign you to some strangers, and we just gotta hope for the best in the end. You guys have no idea the impact these coaches have on these kids every day. Not just on the field, not on the court. I'm talking in the schools. I'm talking in the households. All, there are so many single-parent households. These coaches have stepped up for so many children that do not belong to them. This goes far beyond a sport. They are a family, okay? These are their brothers. These are their fathers, okay? And you guys are opting to take that away from them to create equality, so you say, for kids that you don't even talk to. You guys have not sat down with these children. You have not come to their practices. You do not participate in their programs. These fellas started their own programs because of the park boards and y'all's lack of care for the kids. Y'all are in it for the money. These coaches left for the betterment of these children, which is why we've taken our children to go leave with them, because that's what's best for them. My children don't understand y'all's politics, and my children don't understand y'all's decisions of making it fair for everybody across the city. They don't understand that. What they know is you guys have taken this opportunity away from them to work with the very important men that make a difference in their life every single day. I can't call y'all when I'm having issues with my children. I call their coaches. I can't call y'all when my children need support. I call their coaches. The ones that are there for them every day, no matter what. Y'all need to consider that with these kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's not about y'all money. It's not about y'all politics. It's about what matters for these kids. And until y'all talk to them and step in these roles every day and stay in this city, you'll never understand.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I've been through the, I've been through the list.
And you know what? If we had, if we had natives, a native lawyer, and a native superintendent, some natives on the board, that name would be changed, and we'd have parkland back. Mr. Rice, you said we should be talking about it, something we should be looking at. You guys don't even look me in the face. Three years we've been trying to change the name of Sibley Park, and look what-
I'm trying.
You're trying to wear us down, wear us out. It ain't working. We're gonna be back, and we want land back. We have our people dying in the street, dying in the street.
Thank you so much. Okay.
And we want our land back. We're coming for it. We're coming for you. We can protest your house. We can protest where you live. And we will be there if we don't see action now. We're not asking. We're not asking anymore. Now we're demanding it.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and close. I'm gonna close open time. Thanks for speaking. And we were in the, we were doing the reports of officers. And then I was wondering, does, do you still, Charles, do you still want to say something? Okay. So, with that, we're back. Yeah, so, we're going to resume where we were, which we had the super, uh, report from the superintendent. And so Commissioner Rucker is gonna, is gonna speak. Yep.
Well, first of all, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for coming, the partner agencies.
No, it's, it's, can you, we, there's no comments right now. Okay? Thank you. We have to, we have to go with our business meeting. Just please respect that. No, it's okay. Keep going. If you're okay with that, Charles, or Commissioner Rucker? We know, we know.
They've been dismissed for so long.
We live in Minneapolis.
I hope you understand that.
We know, we know. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rucker.
All right, I just want to thank everybody for coming from the, from the partner agencies. Just to let you, everybody know that we gonna be working with the partner agencies to make this right. Have monthly meetings.
I can't hear you.
Have monthly meetings, work on a resolution while we're doing this, while we're having our meetings. So, I just want to say, this was a victory, a win today for the partner agencies. And we just want to continue to work as partners for the same common goal.
Thank you. So, I would, Commissioner Menz, I see if your light on, but I would really want to only direct, there's opportunities during peas and c's to say more free-form comments. But if you had a question for the superintendent, we could do that. But please keep that on topic, please.
I, I was trying to keep it on topic. There was a, there was a, I'll, I'll leave it for peas and c's.
Okay, thank you so much.
That is so fine.
With that, you're the best. I love it. Okay, with that, we're gonna go to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. I see Commissioner Thompson's light is on first.
Thank you, President Abeni. I was at two different committees last week. We had our first, but my first audit committee meeting. And I just thought I would report back to us that there is a new auditor for the city, which is great. He's, seems really awesome. And there are three things that are touchpoints for audits this year that will, will involve NPRB. I believe it was information government, governance, revenue collections, and special event permits that are gonna just be audited within the city that end up landing on, on our domain. And then Planning Commission, not a lot to report there, except for we had our interview and still trying to earmark ways that we can better connect with parks in a term, when it comes to city planners. So, thanks.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Menz's light went on next.
Hi, I had the pleasure to go to the Legislative Committee, the Pizza and the Parks at the Senate Building today. It was great. As the legislative chair, I decided that I could take a morning off and go see what's going on. And it was really, really incredible. I mean, we're not, there, there's, there's a shortfall, right? But I think that just being there and understanding the, the needs at the state, I got to talk about all the great projects that that, that group has funded for us, and really looking forward to working with our legislatures, legislators, and making those direct connections to support projects that, that we can get done from the state. Because if we're, if we're diligent and we work with Council Rice and Pamela, like, there's, there's some opportunities to get some funding here that we, we might not even see right now.
Awesome. I, I think Commissioner Schaefer.
Sure, I was at, Commissioner Menz, Commissioner Forney and I, we're all at the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board meeting. And they are going through some restructuring and repurposing of what they think the purposes of their organization are. And some of the things that we landed on for discussion, further discussion, are actually changing the boundaries of the Heritage Trail down to Bridge 9. One that it really affects us, and that is just recognizing that they would like to have more diverse membership on the board, including members of the National Park System, U of M, and tribal leadership on the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board. And so it came up as a discussion of the potential of maybe reducing the number of park commissioner roles, particularly in light of 2026 boundary changes where District 4 jumps the river. So, that'll be a kind of a TBD discussion ongoing with them. And good news that we have full funding for the Awamni Omni, Awamni Falling Waters Festival.
Nice. Awesome. Commissioner Forney.
Thank you, President Abeni. Yes, I also attended the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board. And first of all, I just need to say that I'm real proud of the work that was done by former park board employees, it was Chamberlain and Kate Lammers. Awesome job that they did. And I, I'm really, really excited about this organization in this very critical time when our, our riverfront has become so iconic and so important to this community. And to make sure that this organization continues. I was on the Minneapolis Riverfront Partnership, and, and we dissolved it because so many other organizations are coming. But we need to have this voice continue to be there. So, I'm very excited that, it seems like the group, it was virtual, so, but I'm assuming the group seemed very supportive of, of the changes they were proposing. I want to also remind everybody that this Friday at the Minneapolis Institute of Art, the new exhibit Giants is opening up. It will be running through July 1st. Please take it in. It's supposed to be an incredibly important exhibit, anyway. And then lastly, the Tree Advisory Committee, we are finalizing our agenda for this coming year. So, if there's anybody who has any more things that they'd like to add to our agenda, please share with me. Thank you.
Superintendent Bangora.
Thank you, President Abeni. I appreciate this moment. I, I did forget one thing, which I wanted to make sure I did say. I wanted to say ingratitude to Commissioner Rucker and Commissioner Menz. I was working through this really challenging process. But I just want to make, make sure I said that I did have a chance to say it earlier, but ingratitude, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're at the consent business part of our agenda. Would somebody move the consent agenda?
I will move our consent agenda as a slate.
Second? Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as a slate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Now, we have some things coming out of committee.
Yes, on behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I will move Resolution 2025-31. Resolution amending the 2024 Capital Improvement Program to change Fuller Park Waiting Pool and Site Improvements to Fuller Park Plan Implementation without modification of funding sources and amounts.
Second? I hear a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, that carries. The next one?
I will also move Resolution 2025-34. Resolution approving a three-year license agreement with Sound Thinking Incorporated for installation and maintenance of ShotSpotter Gunshot Detection and Location System at Loring Park, Phelps Field Park, East Phillips Park, Phillips Community Center, North Commons Park, and Farview Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Menz.
Uh, yeah, I think I had some questions about like why those sites were chosen. Did anybody follow up on that at the, at the last meeting?
Welcome, Ms. Downey.
Your mic's there. I do have a very short presentation, but that's not one of the questions I unfortunately answered. So, I went back and looked at the video of the last meeting to make sure I answered all the questions that were there. But you're, I want you to repeat your question, see if I can somehow.
How short is the presentation?
Well, it is something they sent to me, so I'll basically, it wasn't something I prepared. But I don't think it's more than five minutes. I can probably go get through it that quickly.
I, I just wanted to know why the sites were chosen.
I will just probably wing it and say it's primarily because the system is about triangulation. And MPD wanted to make sure that they had coverage, so that it's triangulating, and it allows for them to respond much quicker. So, it's, the more that they have them in, I guess, very strategic places, it allows them to triangulate. So, that's what I kind of gathered from, I don't have the direct answer, but that's what I gathered from the presentation.
Okay. And then are, I guess, one more question that maybe you can answer or not. Is it, are we responsible for the maintenance, or they take care of that? Is it?
No, they, we, they actually take care of the maintenance. It's part of the agreement, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions? No? So, with that, I'll ask the secretary to please call the roll. Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Commissioner Menz.
No.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
Aye.
President Abeni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one nay. That carries another resolution.
Yes, also from Admin Finance, I will move Resolution 2025-39. Resolution updating the naming policy to include review by the Board of Commissioners prior to initiating the public hearing process for nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Now, we have got that motion before us. I believe there is, okay. Commissioner, Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abeni. I would like to move the staff amendment to this policy. It involves updates to Procedure A 3 and A 3D, as well as Procedure 4. And you should have that in front of you, and it also is emailed out to Commissioners earlier today.
Okay, we have a motion for the staff amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about the staff amendment? No. Let's vote that on that then. All those in favor of the staff amendments to the main resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're back to the main resolution. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, thank you, President Abeni. I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff, particularly Deputy Superintendent Ringold and Council Rice for, for helping just shape some of this from an idea that I had based on what we've gone through with these naming things. And I know it's important to get that right, and I just really appreciate that time that was taken and the care.
was taken and the care. So, thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion. I see no other discussion, no other lights. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-39, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, we're moving now to unfinished business. Would somebody move the first item?
I will move the resolution approving, Resolution 2025-45, resolution approving the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board Diamond Sports Facility Study.
Second?
Second.
Second. Second from Commissioner Menz. I would like a presentation.
Yes.
Oh. Welcome, Assistant Superintendent Schroeder.
President Abani, Commissioners, I could do two things tonight because I think there's two parts of this. One is approving the document itself, and I can run through that presentation. But following that, I'd also like to give an update on where we stand with the Diamond Sports supporting girls' fast pitch softball. So if I can go through this, I'll try and move through the first part quickly because I think most of you are familiar with it. And you can tell me to speed up at any time.
Okay.
In fact, not that fast. But I was really going to focus on some comments we gained from the public, the elaboration of some of the actions that we defined. And there are a number of actions to be taken. And then eventually get back to, as I pointed out, the upgrades to accommodate field sports. The goal and the charge to staff, we talked about last time. We also talked about the process. The only thing that was added is that we had a public comment period and that some comments on that were included in the background. We talked about the document organization, just general information, some specific actions, and then appendices that get into more details. The public comment period was open for a month. We received 32 comments. They were actually many comments across many different areas. And I've kind of summarized what they're about today. Many of the comments were just, you need to improve facilities, which was kind of the basis of the study. And the charge was directed at staff to begin with. There were some other comments. If you look at this, this chart kind of breaking it down, a lot of people were supporting a pinwheel. But if you recall, the direction to staff was that we weren't looking at configuration so much as how do we elevate the general conditions for play within the system, because we weren't going to go back and update master plans. So the content of the report broke down into kind of informing Diamond Sports and then proposed actions. And we talked about actions relating to scheduling and use, field classes, field count and distribution. And I will say that this field count and distribution is still a work in progress as we will be continuing to upgrade fields, definition of field standards. And that's augmented by one of the appendices to the document, which is a Diamond Sports Manual, which tells us how we're supposed to be laying them out and maintaining them, the care that would be optimal for each class of field that we put into place. And then these are the actions. And I'm not going to walk through each one of these. But I think it's important that if you were to read any part of the document, and I know it's long, at the end of chapters five through 10, we have a series of actions, and they attribute responsibility for acting on some things. But more important, there are budget implications. And we'll be heading into the budget season in not too many weeks. And some of these things require budget amendments. And someone mentioned tonight that if we improve fields, we have to find a way to perpetuate them in the improved state. That's a budget consideration that we'll want to make certain that you understand. And we'll be bringing information forward to you to so help you understand the magnitude of what those kind of things will be. So I'm not going to read through all these I mentioned, but it's the green box at the at the end of each one of these. Okay, maybe I'll pause for just a second and see if there's any questions just on the document itself before I launch into the section on improved fields.
Commissioner Menz?
Yeah, I'll comment on this. I mean, I think, well, this is wonderful. And I really want to thank Commissioners Forni and Musich, Vice President Musich, for when this when this came forward and when we we got these tax establishes. It's taken a while for us to get this first one out. But I think that Michael and staff has done a really good job of creating a model for for how we develop these plans. Because if you, if the board remembers, there's three other tax that are scheduled to be a part of this process. I would say that the the field manual, all the all the intricacies that have plagued our facilities and organization over the years were somewhat exposed during this process. And I really want to commend staff because they didn't shy away from that. They leaned into it. They looked at how the organization can cut across our different departments to figure out how we solve these problems for facilities because there was this individual siloing effect. And the the document really highlights that and also looks for solutions. And I think that if we can look at these action steps, I would also like to talk to to let my Commissioners know that, you know, once these tax are completed, I think it would be wise of us to to look at all of them and come back with a facility, like a plan that cuts across these different types of facilities. So I really just wanted to highlight the staff, the the group that's in the room right now, and all the people who worked on this on this plan. And really impressive where we are now and how we've gotten to an outcome that appears to be building momentum. And this very much relates to some of the NPRB youth sports stuff that we were hearing about registration and how this impacts our youth sports team as well. So really, really impressive work, Michael. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that comment. And I'll add, since we're done talking about the main document, but I really love the standard section. I like the tiering in there. I think that really is really a great approach. And we can, we can understand, we'll have to understand what are the maintenance implications of those those tiers and see what we can do to make sure that we can keep them in the condition that they should be in. But I really think we have something here that's that's a great model, too, for some of the other categories of fields and facilities. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Abani. I, just in the gratitude roundtable, I would just like to add in my two cents as we're moving forward that this, I think as Commissioners, sometimes we're like, yeah, let's do this. At least that's, maybe that was my naivete starting on this commission. And then just the just the vast amount of work and thoughtfulness and things I would have never thought of that that staff and community members put forward. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for that. And also, just since this is our final, I should note that I'm the Commissioner of District Two and Commissioner Menz is the District One. It's swapped on the document. But so, thank you.
Commissioner Typo Correction, please. So with that, I think, yes, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, President Abani. So this is walking through in particular. And while I, while we're focused on improvements to girls' high school softball initially, the the document is intended to broadly raise the level of play at all levels of competition. So I just want to leave that as as kind of a send off to this part. So there's, there's two components to this. There's permanent field improvements that we've been contemplating through this study. There's also temporary improvements that are needed because we will be taking some fields out of service for some period of time while we make the permanent improvements. Fortunately, as we've been moving through this, the Minneapolis Public Schools have stepped forward and said they want to help us improve fields at Jackson Square Park and what we call Shingle Creek Four or Creek V Four in North Minneapolis. We're hoping that through the process, we can get to an agreement because they have bond funds that they need to be able to use for those. And there will, there will be an agreement that we need to bring forward to allow them to expend those funds on our property. But we'll be bringing that forward as they get the field improvements better defined. As we understand it right now, in each of those two fields, they'll be trying to improve, they'll be working to improve them to the same level of improvements that the boys in the same same area have. And that will meet their Title IX improvements. So we'll, Director Swinson has been working with Curtis Hartog from the schools to move these things forward, and we'll be continuing to do that. So we're looking at Jackson Square and Shingle Creek with implementation after this season. We don't want to disrupt the season at this point. And I note here, and I think it's important that we say that we return to play in 2027, because it will probably, the construction will probably extend it to next year. And then we want to have a significant grow in period to make certain that the health is, the health of the turf is there before we turn then to play. For the park board, we have Linden Hills in Southwest and Todd Park in the South. We would like to begin implementation of Linden Hills, parallel with what the school is doing in 2025, and again, returning to play in 27. This is, of course, pending funding. And several people noted that we have $300,000 available in the budget this year. I'll note that there's also $200,000 that wasn't expended last year that we'll be directing to these improvements. And then Todd Park will be happening, probably starting with capital improvements in the park in 2027. And as folks noted tonight, that would be an opportunity for us, hopefully, to find a partner that can help advance this more quickly. Temporary improvements would be at Boston Field Six and Seven, and that would be the installation of, I'm just going to skip through these because I've already kind of talked about where they are. Boston Field Park Six and Seven are in the southeast corner of the park. And the the type of portable or movable fence that we'll be using, this is a product called Sportifence, that's been actually recommended by two of the, two of the leagues here. And so we've, we've been trying to contact the company and get an estimate. We don't know what it costs yet, but we know we have dollars available to get this implemented. And so we'll be talking to them after we get some approval on this tonight. And importantly, if I'm, if I go back to this park, Linden Hills Park, you can note on here that there's actually a series of fields, the ball fields are reorganized so that they don't overlap with a series of other fields. So we would likely be investing in those, the Sportifence or that movable fence, so that it could be implemented at Linden Hills Park when we're done with them at Boston Field.
Yep.
And I think that's where I can stop on this one tonight. Oh, if there's anybody ideas of cost, we talked about that last time. Field's not inexpensive, but we are going to be moving to implement these improvements as directly as possible.
Excellent. So Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Abani. I found a number of questions about the temporary fencing and how removable it is. Primarily, people are concerned if we're implementing them in places where we have multi-use fields, as we call for at Todd Park, for example, that the equipment in the ground would be hazardous for people that are using the fields for other purposes. Could you speak to how the fencing works and whether or not it would interfere with other uses that we have told the public we would be using these spaces for? I understand it does not apply at Boston necessarily, but in places like where we use the fields for soccer or football or rugby, ultimate frisbee, et cetera. Thank you.
President Abani, Commissioner Musich, we, I think the the way we've been trying to refer to this level of infrastructure is semi-permanent fencing. It's not, it's movable. It's not easily moved. People, if you look at this, it's, I've tried to explain it to a few people. You can look at it and you can see that it's got like wheels to help it move when they're deployed. So they, so it is easier to move, but it's not movable. So it's kind of like, I was, I was trying to think of another good sports analogy, and then I could come up with, which might not be good, is a tackling dummy, where it moves as kind of a sled across the field. So they're not easily moved, but they can be movable. I think what becomes important is just how often they are moved. And I think as we've been working through with staff, we've been trying to get them into a situation where they can be moved as infrequently as possible. So so they don't have permanent infrastructure in the ground they're, they're, they're in place. And if somebody were to run into it full speed, there might be some displacement, but they could just be slid back into place.
Okay. So I think there might have been a bit, a bit of miscommunication. And I'm not sure where it came from, but people thought there were going to be rails in the field that these things would move on. And so it sounds like it's a freestanding structure that we would lift and move into or out of the field of play as needed.
President Abani, that that might have been my earlier description because I initially talked about it as a sled which has rails on it, but but not permanent. It's attached to the fence infrastructure and not to the ground.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. That helps. And I will do what I can to get that information out to people that have concerns. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Abani. And and thank you for that clarification and question to Vice President Musich, because I've heard that as well. And and I was privy to lots of discussion about the nature of temporary and movable fencing. And I know that not everybody was. I don't necessarily have comments. I just wanted to thank everybody more formally, starting with my colleague Commissioner Menz and former colleague, our former Vice President Alicia Crudup, for just starting this whole idea. And it's, it's built. And I know that it's taken a lot from a lot of different Commissioners and a lot of different corners and a lot of different parts of staff. And this was incredibly, it had a lot of touch points, planning and rec and also maintenance. So everybody was at the table and a lot of community members. And I'm grateful for President Abani and the way that she's made sure that, tried to carry this over the finish line, a little bit, but wrong sports metaphor. So just wanted to say thank you to everyone and our partners and everyone that's here from 612 and from the Twins. Chelsea, thank you for being here and the support. And I, and I look forward to more support to from MPS, because I know that they're a major partner and stakeholder, and we have yet to fully cross that bridge. But I'm grateful for the work that that people are doing. So I just wanted to be able to say that thank you so much for your guidance on this, too, Assistant Superintendent Schroder. Thank you.
Commissioner Menz?
Thank you, President Abani. I'd also like to personally thank Commissioner Abani, too. I mean, I think that through this whole process, Commissioner Abani has been someone who has been willing to learn more, willing to delve into this issue, which was not one of her issues at times. But a lot of her constituents in District Six were interested. And I really just think that that's a really great model of growth and and working through and acquiring new knowledge base. I do have a question. So and maybe Jack can answer this, too. How do we, how do I personally, or us together, hold the school district accountable for their piece in this? From my window at Edison, I will see one of the fields that they are supposed to improve. So how does that, how would that work? How is that going to work and like the funding structure? So is there any way for you to explain how I can do that effectively? Because you all have been in those meetings with with the school district. And I hear that they've been really positive. So.
President Abani, Commissioner Menz, here's how it's framed, because we don't have an agreement. We've talked about terms with them in really kind of a general way. We know that they want to elevate the field of play, and they want, we know they want to start with these two fields. And I've heard that they might even want to do more than just those two fields so they can be an even better partner with us. I think there will have to be some give and take through this process because they will be bringing funding. We have very little funding to add to it, but we have the land. We can, we can make it happen for them. The limitation will be on your part, that they will need to satisfy that those fields will be in place and maintained for a period of time, say 20 years, to meet the the bonding requirements. To meet the bonding requirements, they're going to need some kind of a structure that will allow them to invest in that land with monies of the state of Minnesota on land they don't own. So we will have to, I don't know how to how to best put this, but I'm going to put it like this, somehow share the ownership of the land for the period of the bonds, at which time, after it expires, it would all come back to us. So there's, there's a fairly complicated agreement that we'll have to work through to make this happen. But I think everyone's motivated by the idea that we have money and opportunities to actually move significantly advance this right now. So so we're, we continue to try to make this happen. And there will be actions that we need to bring back to the board that will be complicated, but we'll try and keep it as direct as possible.
So that that is moving forward where we might have a shared ownership temporarily in order to meet those bonding requests. Okay. I mean, I don't know if, maybe at some point, Council Rice might chime in here on the realistic nature of that possibility because I know that there's been difficulty in that. And maybe we don't need to discuss that today. But I do know that there is some difficulty in those combined capital projects.
President Abani, Commissioner Menz, I don't want to put Council Rice on the spot because we don't know the structure yet.
Okay.
We've raised it as an issue that's likely to come forward. And our staff will be working with Council Rice to figure out what the best vehicle is. There might be some other method of doing it. We don't know.
That's terrific. I think that that's really creative problem solving and thinking that we, it's, it's answering the question, yes, instead of, no, we can't do that. It's, yeah, we can figure that out. And maybe we won't. It's possible we won't. But I think that the attitude that we can figure it out is really, really positive.
So, and I want to just add, because we have people here from the community, that what I really like about this plan is it's not dependent. We're not doing things in series. The school must act first, and then we can act. We can begin to act. We can take actions. And if they, if they speed, if they speed forward, if they get delayed, that's, that's what's just going to happen. We can still do what we need to do. So that's really exciting to me because I think that's been a bit of a part of this whole issue. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, that really, a lot of that explanation answered my questions. But I just would also, you know, the question of maintenance that was raised this evening, I think, is something that is first and foremost in the community's mind and myself as a Commissioner. Because, you know, we have this tremendous investment. And if it means we've got a, you know, however that worked out, whether it's, you know, a volunteer team versus really a, you know, a program that's laid out that saves some of the funds for that maintenance plan, I just would really encourage staff to to keep that top of mind as you go through this process with with the Minneapolis Public Schools. as you go through this process with the Minneapolis Public Schools. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to the community for raising the awareness of this issue. And I think it's pretty exciting. You know, this whole Title IX situation was something that this board did and acted on, and staff acted on.
President Abeney, may I respond to something Commissioner Schaefer raised? Because maintenance is a major concern. As you read through the document, particularly the actions, you will see that it talks about volunteer maintenance of fields. And that was something that was raised by the members of the tack. They're saying they would love to be able to participate. We haven't done that yet. We haven't figured out the method. But it is in there as an action to try and figure that out. And what we've learned is that our staff always have more than enough things to do. And I think as we went through, Dave Berksen was a part of this, and he said some of the best days he has is when he shows up at a field to take care of it and somebody's already repacked the mound and repacked the batter's box. It allows him to just do that much more to take care of the fields. So that is an action that's listed. And it would seem like, one, we know what the issues are. We just need to find, as Commissioner Menz was noting before, a creative way to get to that point. Because we have energized people who want to help.
And just to that point, I would also say that we will be going into our budget work. We can start to talk about it. We won't need to be maintaining a Tier One field just yet. But we do have the other premier fields in the system, which will fall under this. I mean, we're focusing on the softball, but there are other diamonds. I think that also, as Commissioner Menz said, you know, looking maybe at, again, maybe once all of these are done, going back out and looking at essentially the facilities as a whole. But I would say, I think it's realistic, following the master plan, that some diamonds may come offline, some of the overlapped ones, the lower quality diamonds. And so when a maintenance program is developed for these tiers going forward, I think we can be realistic about what needs to be maintained like this at all. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Abeney. I did have one follow-up question that I forgot to ask before. Do we, and I know this is a little bit outside of our purview, but do we have any timeline of when MPS's word will become a more formal commitment? Does it require some sort of ordinance resolution on their part? Is there, I know that staff knows this. I don't know that the community does. I've always been very wary about different partnerships within MPS just because the two organizations have had challenges working together, and I want us to stay where what we can control. That being said, do we have any guarantees from MPS or just suggestions at this point? And could we have a follow-up sometime in the future if they've ever actually committed to that fully?
President Abeney and Commissioner Thompson. So we don't have any, I don't think anyone would call it a guarantee. At the staff level, we have a commitment to see if we can make this happen. And as I noted, we have agreements that have to be put in place, and that will be when you know that we're actually moving forward. We've talked about when this could happen, and it's our understanding at this point that after this softball season, essentially September, they would like to be working. We would like to be working on our responsibilities as well. So we have a path set ahead of us. I don't know that I can say there's guarantees, but there has been, as far as I can translate between conversations I've had with Director Swenson, really positive discussions about moving these things forward.
Thank you. I would like to note that it's MPS that had the Title IX problem, not us. And yet we're solving this. So, yeah, get in a couple snaps for that. I did want to actually add as well, someone that has not been thanked, and that is our Superintendent. Thank you so much for standing with us, getting, this was a true, full organizational thing. And I just wanted to thank you so much. That's all I've got.
And I think Commissioner Menz has spoken a couple times, but he's wearing a baseball hat, so go for it. One more time.
One quick. And, yeah, it's a baseball cap. It's my favorite cap. I just wanted to, it would be remiss if I didn't mention the pinwheel. The pinwheel did come up in our discussions, and it is a bigger item that this board might consider in the future. I think it's appropriate to not put that on here right now because we have other tacks coming. And we should not be designating where a land space should be used at this point because we don't know what the other competing interests are within the fields. So although maybe in the future, that is definitely something that is necessary within the city limits. It's just something that wouldn't get done in this three-year period. So let's wait until we get all these tacks in. Thanks.
President Abeney, Commissioner Menz. I'll note that one of the appendices does deal with that because we knew it was an issue and we didn't want to leave it out there. So we talk about locational opportunities that we have for those because we know they don't fit into every single park.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it was addressed. So with that, I have to, I know there's been a lot of thanking, but I have to do it, too. Thank you so much to Assistant Superintendent Schroder, Said. I know Cliff Swenson's been involved. I know Jeremy and members of his team have been involved, and Mimi and Jack and others. And I don't know all the names, but it is truly a cross-organizational thing, and it's awesome. And Superintendent Bangora, thank you so much. We've worked on this for a long time. And then I have to say one other thing. So it's, I'm just going to just say it. You know, this is my fourth year, and I've dealt with different constituent groups, and it's interesting. There's a different vibe, sometimes different interests and so on. And the community gardeners are hard to beat. That's a nice group of people. But the girls' fast pitch community, particularly Diamond Sports, but girls' fast pitch has been incredible. This would not be happening without your advocacy and your patient tenacity. I don't even know if those words normally go together, but thank you. Thank you very much. So we're going to keep watching. We're going to keep doing this. We're going to try not to misstep. Call me if the fences need pushing out at Boston. I'll be out there. And with that, I want to go ahead and take this to a vote. So all those in favor of Resolution 2025-45, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay. Would somebody move the next item, please?
I will move Resolution 2025-48. Resolution modifying Resolution 2024-85, directing staff to revise temporary and permanent easements granted in the Board of Commissioners's previous approval of the resolution such that streets disturbed by work undertaken by Metropolitan Council Environmental Services are restored to their extant condition with fees reflecting the occupation of, but not betterments to parkland at the Mall Park.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. Is there any discussion?
This, for me, is really, really disappointing. I really feel like it's a betrayal of our shared values of a park board. For me, it really calls into question our commitment to a fair, equitable, and balanced planning process. How can I look at my constituents in the eye? How can I look at them and tell them that we value their voices, that we value them in our CAC processes when, you know, a well-connected minority can come in and completely undercut over two years of planning in the eleventh hour? I think it undercuts our community trust. It undercuts our legitimacy. All future grand plans are undercut by this. I think it puts our staff in really unwinnable positions and situations that ultimately devalues their work, their expertise, and their vision of our park system. What it tells me, and I think it tells our constituents, is that you have to be the right person, in the right room, with the right board allies, at the right time if you want your voice to be reflected in our parks. I really believe that this irrevocably damages our reputation, our legitimacy, and any future endeavors we have. Any major grand plans that we have, calling grand plans because they're never getting rid of master, plans we have are called in question. Hiawatha, Cedar Isles. What's stopping a group at the very last minute from coming in? And if the political outcome changes here, completely overturning everything that we work for. I want to talk about the merits of the plan, but, you know, apparently improving water quality, apparently creating green space, apparently, those are not values that are held in this particular pan. Because what we're doing with this is we are completely delaying a legitimate process. If we decide to go forward with the plan, and in later years, we are costing ourselves a lot of money. I know it's mentioned in one of the reasonings, one of the goals, to work with our strengths, and it's talking about best practices in governance. That is not best practices in governance. That is not good governance. That is not good engagement. Vote no on this. Please. This is the sort of thing that we skewered passports for. Rightfully so. I thought we were better. I think we're better. Please prove me right. Vote no. Let's move forward with the plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Alper.
Thanks. I want to dive just a little bit into the parking literature for a moment. Because when it comes to parking, people want three things. They want it to be convenient. They want it to be available. And they want it to be free. But here's the rub. The parking literature says you can't have all three. You can only have two. And right now, we have free parking, and it's convenient, but it's not available because it's full. So I would add one more thing. You also can't have a park if you have parking. And so we have a great plan here. We have a plan that had an incredible community input that went into that development that the Board of Commissioners approved. We have processes and procedures that I know many of you hold up to be what we're, sort of our gold star. And to vote yes to this resolution to date is to really just to throw all those procedures and planning processes right into the garbage and to say, eh, eh, I believe in ad hoc processes. It doesn't really matter. We can just do whatever a small group wants that comes to us despite the, you know, additional studies and recommendations that have an intense amount of money and funding that we've spent developing a concept plan, doing a parking study. We can just change things around. And sure, that's our prerogative, but it just flies in the face of what we are trying to achieve in terms of good governance and in terms of rational thinking. So I would encourage us instead to vote no on this resolution, to look at the results of the parking study that came before us. You know, things like enforcing our existing park board ordinance that already prohibits parking in parks between midnight and 6:00 a.m. Or we could install parking meters in high-demand areas to encourage turnover. That's a very, very, very well-established process. That's something we already do. We could do it here as well to make sure parking is available when and where it's actually needed. So these are some real solutions that balance the needs of renters, visitors, businesses without sacrificing green space that will help, you know, not add impermeable surfaces to our park system and parkland, create a more sustainable, people-centered vision for the mall. So I would just urge us to remember why, why we have these processes in place, why we shouldn't ditch them at this last minute. So I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Before I call on anyone else, I want to just say a few things. And I might need to call on Assistant Superintendent Schroder, but I really see it differently. And at first, I think we need to be, you know, candid in this discussion and say that for certain members of our community, cars and parking are political now. It's a political thing. There's an interest, you know, I did receive emails. And I mean, I'm a civil engineer. I'm in the milieu. I've heard for years, you know, put your, you know, your private hunk of junk or your private property on public land, you know. So that's how it's referred to. That's referencing a parked car. So I want to be clear about that, for sure. It's for people, it's a political movement, and I understand that. I actually do understand that. But I would ask this question. A concept plan that's adopted, or a long-range plan, as we're going to rename them, is a concept plan. Is that true, Mr. Schroder? It's a concept plan.
President Abeney, I would say that, yes, if you consider a concept plan to lay out basic configurations, uses, land uses, and note that as many of our concept plans or long-range plans are never fully implemented, they become somewhat visionary or aspirational as well.
Yeah, they're aspirational. I think we've definitely seen that. But there's also, there's no feasibility analysis of those plans. I mean, a case in point is the, at the sailing center at Bede Makaska is going to be moved to a new location because going into detailed design, it was determined that that is not a feasible location because of the soils in that location. So I think we'll be hearing more about that. But I want to say this. Before the plan was approved, the whole Southwest area master plan, which was massive, it's a big plan, 45 parks or something like that, was circulated to the city. And the only comments on the mall, really, from the city, okay, this is after city review, these comments were, and this is their document. I pasted it in here, from July 2020. They mentioned there was a typo, okay, in the mall area, the plan, the graphic. But they also said, "Street closures and alley access changes will require additional review and study." So what was done previously was asking to go back to the city to talk to the fire marshal, the fire chief, and to talk to the city engineer. The city engineer pointed to this traffic and parking study. I would also say that the fire chief was very clear. Closing any, the plan shows closure of parts of that eastbound road, the southern leg. Well, it's not valid. We cannot do that. We cannot close that. So it already now is an infeasible design. This is a problem. This is a big problem and could potentially open a can of worms. So, and then from there, we looked at the parking study. If we could pull up the parking study graphic right now, hmm. You know, I've seen a lot of parking and traffic studies in my career. You know, you can draw a big box and say, this is your parking capacity, your available capacity. But that's a little arbitrary. So I would say this is an infeasible plan. This is what is in the long-range plan, the master plan, is really an infeasible concept. And we should just pause. And I'll say one more thing, or we can come back to me, maybe. But there is maybe some light at the end of the tunnel about maybe some future development near that park. And there's a letter in our P's and C's regarding that. With that, I'll call on Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Abeney, and I appreciate that because that's my question. I appreciate your comments because I was wondering if we could get, I remember the controversy, and I remember requesting background from the fire marshal and all the things that are here. But can someone, I don't know if we have pictures or if we have a presentation, but just some, like, help me understand what is the major difference between, I guess I'll say what is and what is being proposed? Or is there not like a visual on that? I'm staring at the map and then some pictures, but I was just curious because I couldn't find it.
Perhaps Assistant Superintendent Schroder, it's better to articulate what the resolution does if it passes, which is the do-nothing, I would call it, alternative.
President Abeney, that's correct. I was just going to, like, for Commissioner Thompson's question. This is the Mall Park as it exists today. And if my cursor is showing up on your screen, you can see a lane that runs all the way down to the Walker Library or just sort of Walker Library, then returns back out to Bede Makaska Boulevard. So that's a condition that exists today. The master plan condition is this. These two blocks of the westbound traffic are removed, and the parking as well. These two blocks would be redirected back into those interior blocks. The rest of it is the same as it is. The nature of the road in the easternmost portion would change according to the plan, but traffic is still maintained through that portion.
And thank you. I appreciate this because it just helps me understand what we're talking about. So the section down by like numbers, I'm just looking at number seven. We don't need, that area where the road would be taken out, that is what the feasibility is where it's just challenging to meet our needs? Am I reading that correctly? And maybe Commissioner Schaefer would understand it because I know she's been heavily involved. Just for me to understand what we're, so that's the part that's a challenge?
So the...
For engineering and fire and all the services that the city does.
President Abeney, Commissioner Thompson. So we asked the fire marshal or chief tiner to look at this in its totality, and his basic comments back related to fire hydrants, which we don't control, but we assured the city that we would facilitate that if they had a need to put them in. And then a demonstration that we should be adhering to a 20-foot clear zone for fire vehicles to move through, which doesn't, it has some practical difficulties here in terms of... here in terms of changing that because we have a twelve-foot parking lane and an eight-foot parking bay. And opposite the parking bays, we have trees that are probably six feet or so beyond the curb. So implementation of what Chief Tyner said would require some major changes to the mall. Not just, even if these streets were perpetuated in their, in their current configuration, we would be asked to be changing something significant in the park. I'm hoping that answers your question, but I'm not sure it does.
It does. I will be honest, as I don't, I'm not as familiar with this plan as probably some of my colleagues are. And I just, I too have gotten people in outreach of yea or nay, and I just really wanted to tease out what am I voting for? So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I'll just, first of all, say that this primarily is not a discussion about the pros and cons of parking or of disrespecting the community engagement that has happened to this point or of vilifying the East Isles community. This is about considering a portion of a long-range plan idea at the time of implementation and making sure that it makes sense within the whole redesign. We don't want to have regrets. And I think it has been clear from the good work that the board directed staff to do that there are some concerns, most highly with the eastbound traffic on the mall. And for us to move forward with a piece of this plan with not understanding the full impact of what other changes may have to happen, it's not a, it's not a good use of our time or the work of MCES. So what I would like to tell and point out to the commissioners that you may not have known about because this portion of the, of the mall got the most highlight, that there is a portion of the master plan of a design of a plaza that goes back decades. Well, decade for sure, maybe not plural, that was approved by both Metro Transit, Hennepin County, and NPRB. I don't know if it had official board approval, but it's in our, it's in our long-range plan to have a plaza there at the end of the mall that would activate that space at the bus stop and had a fountain, had a, you know, be a place where people could hang out in more of a park-like amenity in an area that has a lot of activity, that would draw more park visitors to the mall, would activate a space in Uptown that's, that needs activation. And so in thinking about this, I would like to think about when we go back and do all that work, not to forget about that, that that's a piece of the puzzle, that we could take away parking and make it bigger there or maybe get rid of part of that U-shape so that it really could become an amenity more than just putting turf down on these two blocks to the west where you have a regional park within Stone's Throw. So I'm really excited that if we move this forward tonight, we're basically, there's no expense to us. MCES is just going to put back what they destroyed, and we will put a pause on this until we come up in the equity matrix. Part of this is being forced by work that another jurisdiction has to do. So this will give us time to really dialogue more, have an open time where the community and whoever can relook at whatever we're going to do in total for this and not just these two blocks. So, yeah, that was my time.
Thank you, Commissioner Forni.
Thank you, President Abani. Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, if I can ask you a few questions, I'd really appreciate. There is context to all this, so please understand. When the Seven Pools was to be redone, was it in a master plan?
President Abani, Commissioner Forni, when Seven Pools was initiated, the Southwest Service Area Master Plan was in process but not complete. So the board didn't have a, an adopted plan for that park at that time.
Was there a reason why it suddenly got done even though it wasn't in the plan?
President Forni, I'm sorry, President Abani, Commissioner Forni, it's hard when you're both, same question. The, in 2021, I believe, or something, I think it was about then, Seven Pools Fountain was a hundred years old. It was in bad shape, and the neighborhood recognized it. And the neighborhood, including Commissioner Schaefer, did an amazing job raising funds to be able to advance that project. There wasn't enough funds to do everything. The park board found additional funds through MPP20 Rehab to be able to redo portions of it. So it was advanced in, in the planning. It didn't get approved by the board until after the master plan or the long-range plan for that park was approved. But the planning was happening during the time when there was not an approved plan for the park.
And in the equity, our equity matrix, where was it sitting approximately?
Thomas Lowry Park. I don't know exactly, but I'm going to guess it was in the lower ranks of the, of the equity rankings.
So if I hear correctly, it's because of the great efforts of Commissioner Schaefer and community that funding came available and it's like, let's do the fiscally responsible thing and address this issue of something that is envisioned by the community, correct?
President Forni, President Abani, Commissioner Forni, that's correct. But I need to make clear that the funds that were directed to it, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe they were rehabilitation funds, which are direct on the basis of immediate need and not equity.
Appreciate that. So if I remember correctly, this plan that we're talking about, which has the mall and everything, that was four years ago or a little over four years ago. In other words, the former board approved it?
President, President Abani, Commissioner Forni, that's correct.
Okay. I bring that up because I was the only commissioner that did question the idea of the mall because at the same time, King's Highway was being pleaded to do the same thing. So I just want that clarification. Anyway, so if I remember correctly, what was it, two years ago or was it a year ago that this board asked for a study to be done to make sure that all these things were viable, such as the fire marshal, parking, et cetera? And staff has done their due diligence, correct?
President Abani, Commissioner Forni, that's correct.
Okay. And in your read of it, is it saying, no, you can't do this? Or is it saying?
President Abani, President, Commissioner Forni, so I need to make something clear that the staff, we are not experts in parking and traffic. We reached out to the city as the resolution directed to engage expertise beyond what we had. And City Engineer Dodds was gracious enough to bring his traffic team together in a meeting to help us understand how we could move through this. They provided us insights about how a traffic and parking, they actually said it, you should be doing a traffic and parking study at the same time, not just a traffic study. They gave us recommendations about firms that would be worth engaging in this. We selected a firm that was on their list. We asked that firm to provide us a scope of work based on our limited ability to craft a request for qualifications for an area that's outside of our particular expertise. And they performed that work. We did ask City Engineer Dodds to review the work when it was done. And I talked with Brian, and he basically said, "We don't have any comments on what was, the work that was done." Maybe he said, "Don't take any exceptions." There was some more formal way he had it, but I don't remember the exact words.
Thank you. And then this resolution seems to say that staff is the one who is bringing it forward. My understanding, though, is that all the staff is asking for, give us a direction, which way to go. And that it actually was not initiated by you.
President Abani and Commissioner Forni, so we've been holding MCES at bay for, even, for even longer than before this first resolution, 2024, '25 was, was there. And we do feel some need to reconcile that. So that there was, that there was a resolution brought forward, encouraged by others, we supported that because we need to get to resolution because their original intention was to start this project in April. Based on where we are, I'm not sure we'll be able to get the formal agreements in place by then, but we'll be very close. And what we do, we don't want to be holding up this, I think the larger project is called the Hopkins Interceptor. We don't want to be holding that up any longer.
And my last thing that I need to ask is, by us passing this resolution, it doesn't change the concept. In other words, that plan is still there to remove the turf or to remove the road?
President Abani, Commissioner Forni, this resolution only directs staff to put back the pavement, to have MCES put the pavement back. It doesn't amend the master plan. We haven't done engagement around an amendment to the master plan. It only deals with the surfacing that would be required under the easements granted to MCES. And I'll note that the easements have already been granted. There's just this spot that needs to be filled in. And that's what this resolution is trying to do.
Thank you. Yes, as I indicated, I was one of the commissioners who did bring up, you know, whether or not the mall plan should happen or not. I questioned intensely, and I have to tell you, all commissioners of the former board voted to support it, okay? In spite of what I brought up, okay? So it was vetted then. It's been vetted again by, you know, what we actually asked. And that was, please staff, do your due diligence and find out if this is feasible or not. So I bring up Seven Pools because that suddenly got rushed up because funding was available. Funding is available, and nobody expected this.
Thank you, Commissioner Forni.
Speak a second time.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I'd like to just give a little history that maybe you've forgotten about, Commissioner Forni. But the Lowry Hill Neighborhood Association had a $300,000 NRP, NRP dollars that they needed to use by a timestamp. As you remember, the city was starting to claw back all those NRP funds. Lowry Hill Neighborhood Association had afforded, had invested in affordable housing for over twenty years. And their money came back to them for spending within the boundaries of their neighborhood. We have one park within Lowry Hill, and that's Thomas Lowry Park. The one asset, the biggest asset of our neighborhood was that pool that was arts and craft historical infrastructure that was built in 1921. That park would not be there if it weren't for the community involvement. There was going to be a thirteen-story office commercial building there when it originally started. And they wanted to celebrate by making something special in this park, and they built this arts and crafts investment fountain that would never be built in a park today, right? It just wouldn't happen with our climate issues. The community wanted to save that. And so the Lowry Hill Neighborhood Association approached the Friends of Thomas Lowry Park, of which I was the president. They said, "We have this money, but it's not enough. We're not in line with the equity matrix, but the time is now. If we don't fix it now, we're going to lose the 3D modeling that we can do to save this pool." So anyways, I'm getting fired up because it brings back a lot of memories. But anyways, that's, that's where it came from.
We're getting off topic, though. We veered a little bit here. So do you have other comments with regard to the resolution? We've lost a person now at our dais here, too.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify the Seven Pool issue.
Okay. I guess, Commissioner Forni, go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. Yes, I do truly know all the history of that. And the only reason why I bring it up is the fact that when funds suddenly become available out of the blue, as you indicated, forced, okay, or were not forced, whatever it is, it is for us to be fiscally responsible to adhere to that plan, to the vision that was created through a broad, you know, community process. And I feel that it is fiscally irresponsible for us not to move forward with this. Do I think this is the greatest thing since sliced bread? No, it's not a matter of whether I do or I don't. But we went through the community process. The board, you know, approved it. The board asked for additional information. It was given, and it's basically saying, you can go forward with it. And so I'm really seriously wanting people to understand, this erodes trust in the community if we do not follow it. I mean, Commissioner Menz said earlier and everything about, the community is making us accountable. And I want to make sure that we are accountable to this.
Okay, thank you. I just want to also just say, and I think we'll kind of call this, I think we'll be done. Is that okay?
That's fine.
A couple of things I want to point out. It seems to have come to a light. There's in the P's and C's, there's a letter from Assistant Superintendent Schroeder to the CPED, at the city, talking about potential for future development of the multifamily, really probably even closest to the library. You know, one of the darn problems with this is that the library egress is out onto the mall. That is unfortunate that it was allowed to be built that way, right? So that, that creates a need for that roadway. But if there is a future development, the crux of the letter is that the develop, the development would either need, if it needs to either front lagoon or it would need to plat some right-of-way on its own property, south of the mall property, for a proper public right-of-way. And frankly, any new development would be a building with sprinklers, right? The old buildings there don't have sprinklers, you know, for fire. And when you have a sprinkled building, you only need one, a fire lane on one side of the building. So with that, I would also just say, the other real consideration here is the firefighting. To me, this, this whole plan is, is at this point infeasible. We should just let the Met Council move on. And at a future date, there's not even any money for this project. Take up, take up this concept again and really, really look at it. So, okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and take this to a vote. And I can do a roll call because I know that otherwise I'd be asked to do a roll call. So all those in favor of, Secretary, will you please take the roll, roll call on Resolution 2025-48?
Commissioner Alper.
No.
Commissioner Forni.
No.
Commissioner Menz.
No.
Commissioner Olson.
No.
Commissioner Rucker.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
No.
President Abani.
Aye.
You have four ayes, five nays.
That does not carry. Okay, with that, we've got one more item on the agenda, and that is a discussion item about volunteerism.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a study item on volunteerism, a performance goal. So it's one of your fifteen performance goals for the, for your term. So we want to give you an update on where it's at and then share with you a vision statement that staff are proposing. So here we go. So again, the performance goal is, as it says here, "Enhance and unify organization-wide volunteer management infrastructure by creating a single tracking system, recruitment strategy, and recognition program that supports all cultures easily accessing volunteer opportunities that range from grassroots to large scale, and establish a 2026 growth target for volunteerism that incorporates the cultural diversity of the city and the budget requests that supports accomplishing that target." Now, I will say, one thing that we did get feedback when we created the 25 budget and the 26 plan is that at that point, there wasn't an interest in additional funding toward this goal. So we are, as a team, working at how we bring it forward without anticipating a funding request coming for the 2026 year. Here is the four years of this particular plan. There's, I do have the float-ins. Oh, and Adam missed it again, twice in a row. So float-ins were on his behalf. Well, the float-ins tell you that we are done with 23 and they, and that in 2024, when we were creating the common vision, we got through a lot of the community engagement. But when it came to assembling staff to work on that part of it, they were busy managing volunteers. And so we had to wait a little bit and get more busy on this towards the end of 2024. So as we look at this, we are currently, we've got a vision statement for you tonight. Staff are currently working through the policy component of this, but we are trending a little bit behind where we intended to be at this point. So why do a visioning process? The purpose is to have a common vision for volunteerism within the Minneapolis Park and Recreation System that will establish the intent and needed resources of engaging volunteers. Why do we need this? Well, there are- volunteers. Why do we need this? Well, there are a few different visions of volunteerism within the system, and we want to try to create the policy and the tracking systems that move towards a common vision so that we're understanding the best allocation of resources. I'll touch on this briefly. Basically, what this is, is the timeline by which we prepared the survey, launched the survey, and then had analyzed it. So really, some of the key dates is we started launching the survey to kind of existing volunteers in that March timeframe. We used Earth Day to be the launch of the kind of big external volunteer survey. In May, we asked ourselves if we were getting enough data. We decided we hadn't, so we didn't close the survey until July 31st, and now we're here today with a vision statement. We had 465 respondents. I'm going to go through some of the data that we used that fed into this. Of those respondents, about 80, almost 80% were existing volunteers, and 20%, just over 20% were prospective volunteers. When we asked folks how they currently volunteer, you can see that we had a really good turnout in the garden, in the group service, in the Earth Day. And in fact, we left this survey open extra to do more recruitment in order to build the youth sports coaching category in particular, and we're happy to see the amount of responses we got in that category by the time we closed it. When we asked people how frequently they would like to volunteer, you can see, you know, weekly, several times a month, monthly, and several times a year. You know, there's almost kind of equal in those spaces. So it's not everybody says they want to be out there daily, and not everybody says they want to be out there once a year. There's kind of a variety in this survey. One of the things we were hoping to achieve through this survey was to get a couple of things. One, motivation. Why are people volunteering? What's the interest in the volunteers? And so for those who completed the survey, taking care of parks, improving the environment, and serving the general public hit those top categories. Perhaps not so surprising in terms of the kind of ratio of what people were volunteering. So do pay close attention to the amount of support youth and families, and meeting people and being social. That comes up a little bit more strongly when we look at what the community who completed this survey said we should think about when we invest in volunteerism. I need you to think about this a little bit upside down. The support is the agree, and the strongly agree is the teal and the orange, so the top part of each of these bars. The neutral is the yellow, and the disagree or strongly disagree is the blue and the green. What we really focused in on as a team when we were looking at the survey results was two things. One, when comparing our volunteers interested in providing basic services, augmenting basic services, or providing additional services, we really focused in on the augmenting basic services with almost 80% agreeing or strongly agreeing. But we couldn't not see how strongly this piece in terms of why we should be investing creates sense of community came up so strongly in the responses. And that actually came up really strongly in the open-ended questions and the comments that were coming in there. So we really kind of grabbed from that augmenting basic service and that creating a sense of community as two really big things to think about as we created the vision statement. The other piece of data we pulled into this, because remember, that survey is the people who chose to fill it out. But we also asked a really important question regarding volunteerism on our statistically valid survey. And that statistically valid survey gave us a sense in terms of how much we might be able to increase volunteerism within the city of Minneapolis from a statistically valid viewpoint. And we saw that maybe 16% of the population would be like, would be wanting us to rely more strongly on volunteerism. So that really supported this concept that we shouldn't be hanging our future on volunteerism as our source of being able to do things in the system, but really thinking about that augmenting component of it. A couple of pieces on capacity. So we're looking here at the difference between people who are saying yes, that they are currently volunteers. Overall, those respondents showed a trend toward wanting to volunteer less frequently. So our current volunteers were saying they wanted to volunteer less frequently. Earth Day volunteers, remember, they came once. So those Earth Day volunteers, they said they might want to volunteer a little bit more frequently, so there's some opportunity there. And some of those strongest groups, the park stewards, Eloise Garden Group, they also showed a slight increase. Youth sports coaches showed that they wanted to move more towards maybe a monthly volunteer versus where they were currently at. When we looked at folks who aren't currently volunteering and looked at their potential capacity, their greatest interest was monthly, several times per year and yearly. So not the daily, not the weekly, but monthly or more. And they generally indicated lower frequency than those who are currently volunteering. When we compared current volunteers and potential volunteers on a couple of things, like the provide basic or augment the basic services, current volunteers were 62% strongly agree or agree, and potential were a little bit short of that at 53%. And that's the provide basic services. When we got to augment, we saw both of those numbers come up a little bit higher. Okay, so this gets into the tada. Here is our proposed vision and commitment statement. So just a little note, the committee members for this particular, everybody took a question and analyzed it, and then we came together, and we spent a good day together, a good half-day together, each person sharing their understanding of what they saw in the data. And we ended up identifying what are some of the keywords and phrases, and that's where this comes from. So four parts. The first part, volunteerism at the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board is a transparent, mutually beneficial relationship between staff, individuals, and community that exists to augment existing park services. We see that as the overarching. Then we want to talk a little bit about what we ask the volunteers commit to. Volunteers commit to engaging in opportunities designed to augment existing services and support the NPRB's mission and vision. So important that we are augmenting existing service and supporting the things that are our mission and vision. It's not uncommon for our staff to be asked to do a lot of things that might actually be our existing services and might not be within our mission and vision, so trying to help set that stage. NPRB commits to, this is what we are committing to, commits to providing a diverse range of opportunities that foster social and physical well-being and connections among volunteers. We actually could see in the data, volunteers want a little swagger. They want to have a reputation with us. They might want to have their own spot on the volunteer website where they are, or on our website where volunteers go. They get all the information, and they get to feel like they're a little bit more part of, a little bit insider component to it. And that was across, whether it was a coach, a garden, whatever that was, that was across it. And then finally, the NPRB commits to actively cultivating volunteers who reflect the demographics of the community. That's a big job. We're not seeing that in our volunteer base. We've got some work to do there. Enhance access and simplify pathways to volunteering. People want a common place to go, that nice customer service entry into this space, and intentionally recognize volunteers for their contributions to the park system. Not necessarily rocket science, but what we heard from folks throughout the survey, what staff feel is probably pretty consistent and important to helping guide their work. Quick view of who are those staff, great team, environmental stewardship. We've got Deb Pilger and Sherri Brooks in planning. We've got Adam Arvason in recreation, Tim Great and Eric Cherland in the Support Services Deputy's Office, Audra Peery, Jamie Neldner, Annie Olson, Wendy Mong. So we've got Visitor Services, HR, kind of all covered in there. And then in External Services, Leslie Vincent. So I'll take a moment. I'll go back here. It's hard to comment on something. I will send this out. We will talk about it again. But any initial comments, thoughts that you would share?
Are you, so...
Yeah, we're done. I'm done with the presentation.
Okay, good. The reason I ask is sometimes it says questions? Okay.
Yeah. Well, and I could do that, but I figured this was going to be what you wanted to see.
Okay. Commissioner Menz has something to say?
Yeah, thank you so much for keeping that open so that the youth, I mean, I think that that was really great to recognize that if we don't have those, that group in there, we're missing a very big part of our volunteer base. I think that, I think that Rec said today, we had 50 to 60 coaches sign up through centralized registration today. I like it. I think that this speaks to what our volunteers should be doing. And I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking less about our nature volunteers and more about our field volunteers and what we talked about today around how we augment the work done at those spaces so that staff can do their job easier. And I think that those are really great, and I'm glad that this statement's going to reflect that need.
Commissioner Forney?
Thank you, President Abani. Wonderful. For somebody who came into the spot and everything through volunteerism and everything, I'm just really grateful that we're getting an understanding. I wonder, in this, I'm sorry if I miss it, whatever, have we looked at what various races, cultural backgrounds, our volunteers come from?
President Abani, Commissioner Forney, what we are seeing is that the volunteers who responded to this particular survey tend to be older and predominantly white. What we were hoping to get is more of the, kind of the one-day volunteers, the group volunteers. That's where we're seeing a younger potential volunteer base to draw from and a less white volunteer base to draw from. So when I say reflecting the demographics of the community, we know this is going to be a big deal in order to try to figure out how do we take some of those volunteers who might be doing one-time volunteers and try to cultivate that into a stronger volunteer base, or provide more one-day volunteer opportunities to appeal to the younger and less white population? So that's, there's a lot of work for us to do there, and we're seeing that. We don't know all the answers yet.
It's real curious to me, because, I mean, first of all, I think all of us should acknowledge that Minneapolis is really, really unique in the fact of the amount of philanthropy, the amount of, you know, volunteerism. It really is unique. And I hate bringing this up, but I remember talking with Joan Monbale, and they, as you all may remember and everything, lived in Japan. And I asked about volunteerism. She basically said it's not a cultural thing. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but I just, it's fascinating. Is it the word? Is it, you know, I don't know, but I just think, however we can expand it, whether, like I say, is it language? Is it, you know, what it might be? But I feel like there are some barriers that we need to take down because it's so rewarding to volunteer. Anyway, thank you for the work.
Okay. I just, I did read through the comments that came in. They were pretty good. Like, they were pretty specific, I thought, and it was interesting to see the groups, you know, showing up. And then to Commissioner Forney's point, I mean, in the Ps and Cs is that the racial equity evaluation for the community garden season, I'm just saying so that that work is already underway by the organization to look at that and see what can be done. But I thought that actually, that report showed a very good diverse mix among community gardeners, pretty getting closer to being reflective of the city of Minneapolis. So anyway, it's a little digression, but are there other questions? Or Commissioner Schaefer?
Sure. I'll just say, I really think that piece that the respondents said around the importance of community and relationship building is, irregardless of anything else, that's almost a programmatic, I mean, it's a programmatic thing to begin with, but I'm saying that that goal in and of itself is worth the program. I mean, if people are really feeling like it's a great way for them to connect with their neighbors or each other, or people they don't know in a way that's, you know, vision-focused, that's just really exciting, and I think something that would be, something that would draw other people in, and just grateful for the work. And then is there any, like, action? Can you remind me what the next step is from this statement?
Yeah. President Abani, Commissioner Schaefer, so we're going to keep kind of working on this statement a little bit. I think we'll end up bringing it to you either to receive and file or to accept. But staff are starting to work through the pathways that we have volunteers, how we currently track volunteers through the system, trying to figure out if we can find a common kind of software system to be able to do a great job of managing volunteers. And then we really have to work on kind of the consistent recruitment and retention, and as well as the recognition-type policies. So we're starting to work on those parts of it. I will say that component of the program, that was one of the things that we've been really thinking quite a bit about, right? Because you could be having volunteerism in order to provide the services of the organization, or it does that, and it's a program for the folks. And what we really feel like we're hearing is that this is about a little bit of a mix of both, and we really have to recognize that there's a program aspect to it.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I've been speaking a lot tonight, so I was going to hold off, but I did just want to say thank you for all of this good work. And point out that, from what I saw on there, is that a lot of neighbors, ourselves, volunteer to be part of the community, and a lot of those volunteers are actually, were coaches, youth coaches. And I know that there's been a lot of tension in the last couple of weeks around some of that stuff, and I just, I myself, as a youngster, started coaching by volunteering. Yes, it was like a community service thing I had to do for high school. But it just shows how, I mean, people go on a pathway from doing that, and it leads to greater things. And I just am grateful that we have these opportunities for our community, to build community, and that we are facilitator of that. And I just extra wanted to highlight, especially again, like Commissioner Menz says, the coaches, because we are doing a lot of good work with that in our rec department, and I just want to highlight that. Thank you so much.
Okay. With that, I think we'll go ahead and close out that part of the meeting here, the discussion, and we will move to petitions and communications. I'll start with Commissioner Forney.
Excuse me, I just put something on her face. Hmm? Did she just eat something? Oh, I didn't see. Sorry. Exactly. No problem. Yes. Oh, my goodness, I can't even remember when it was, over a week ago. I went on a tour, I'm not sure exactly what the word was for, with Melaton and In Motion and the Minneapolis Parks Foundation of North Commons. And it was a really interesting tour, or whatever you want to call, that really spoke about the history of that area, and there is just tremendous amount of legacy in North Commons, and it just excites me even more about the work that we hopefully are moving forward on that. But anyway, I want to thank both groups, you know, for putting that together. I also heard Dr. John Amfison, who used to be, oh, I'm sorry, I cannot remember exactly what his title was, but anyway, who did a really powerful presentation about the cut-off wall at the falls. And I just want to make sure that we have our antennas out because the falls is so iconic to the city, to the river, and want to make sure that we don't lose it as a result of nobody is staking any, shall we say, claim to who's responsible for that. And that could be a real serious thing. And then just also, this weekend, Eloise Butler is doing a, whatever, I'll call it buckthorn busting, but anyway, hopefully the people will go to that. So that's this, oh, excuse me, Sunday from 2:00 to 4:30. I don't think I had anything else, but you know me, I want to acknowledge all the people and our staff. And this one is for Katie Dennison, who I hope is somewhere around. Anyway, her birthday is tomorrow. Happy birthday, Katie.
Commissioner Olson?
Pass.
Commissioner Rucker?
Pass.
Commissioner Elper? Commissioner Elber?
Yeah, thanks. In, in honor of an event that happened last week that I just learned about, I asked ChatGPT to write me a poll. And in the spirit of prior poetry readings here, I thought I would read it out loud. So it's called "The Ledger of Trust." A question asked, a page revealed, not for justice but concealed, a quiet hand, a searching eye, no warning given, no asking why. The fruit vendor counts what's fair, what's due, an honest trade, a weight held true, but roots run deep in stolen ground where promises broke without a sound. The ash tree fades, its limbs now weak, a buried hunger claws and speaks. Not every wound is seen in time, not every breach will leave a sign. A name exposed, a bond undone, not out of need, but just because. And when the hunter turns to flee, who will be left to trust in thee? Thank you.
All right. A little slam in here. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, just want everyone, the commissioners to be aware, you maybe saw the gov delivery, but we had some mature trees cut on the west side of Cedar Lake. And very disturbing. So we're, they're, they're working on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Menz?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that that's something maybe to bring the, I don't know if the Tree Advisory Committee would be interested in taking that on their agenda. Also, I wanted to invite everybody. I know that Monday, we're having a Grand Rounds Open House, where the staff is. Julie Aldrich is the new project lead on that. And there's going to be an unveiling of the, of the plans, and that should be really exciting. That's one of the major projects happening in our area. I also wanted to speak briefly to, in my opinion, the amazing thing that happened today. So in response to centralized registration, there have become groups that weren't unified before unified. There have become, there is collaboration. Thanks to the superintendent. Thank you for your letter. Commissioner Rucker, thank you for your leadership in this, in this fight. As you know, sometimes I can get a little bit passionate and maybe not have the right strategy. And I, and I think that, you know, the strategy to put a resolution for was not, it pushed some things and hopefully got some ideas there. And I know that the staff and the superintendent and Commissioner Rucker and myself are going to be working through that. And I think that, I, I really want to also highlight Al Flowers, who was out there and really gave, gave this process a win. I would argue that we haven't won. That, that, and for the community who really wants us to fight for youth, they want us to fight for what is happening or what has happened to them in the past. And I think that superintendent's letter is, is good. And it's a step in the right direction. Because we can only, as Carrie Day, Espinola has told us, work at the speed of trust. And it feels like we have some trust that's building. So let's continue that. And I would say that we're not giving up. Just because the resolution wasn't on here for us to vote on, doesn't mean we haven't fought. And it means that, you know, maybe we kicked the field goal because we're down ten, but the game's not over. And we got to keep pushing. And I know that the staff is dedicated to this. And I think that not only are we fixing the registration issue that has plagued youth sports for years, but we could be fixing many more issues to put youth sports in NPRB on a track where we're serving way more of the needs than we have in the past. And I'm, I'm really excited about that, especially with the TAC, and especially with, with the leadership of the staff and the leadership that came from the community. So thanks. I mean, I've been working on it quite a bit, and it's caused me a lot of stress. But today felt good, felt like progress. So thank you for, to all of those who are involved in that.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you so much. I, I will say something this week. Probably because it's an election here, and all of our futures are unknown, I've been really thinking about what a privilege it is to just sit in this chair with all of you and with the staff. And a lot, it's been a tense week with a lot of these things. And I don't, I personally don't take it lightly. I don't think any of us do. I'm not intending to imply that. Just the, the privilege it is to sit here and, and get to decide these things. And so I just wanted to state that because, because nobody knows what the future holds in that regard. And it is really just landed on me a lot this week, the privilege to be able to be part of these conversations. And toward that, I just wanted to also highlight and thank our superintendent, who's done really incredible work for a long, obviously a long time. But two things that just came up tonight that he really took a hand in trying to fix where maybe we as commissioners, you know, did, did something different. And he kind of came in with community members and, of course, centralized registration and, and with the Diamond Sports, both coming up tonight. I don't think that we would have had as, maybe as, we would have had much more tense meeting even as it was if it wasn't for our superintendent. So I wanted to say thank you publicly for all of your work. And for listening to all of us and trying to help come up with a good idea from all of our, our nine, we're the Fellowship of the Parks. And I, I also just wanted to congratulate our new, our new staffers, our Director of Forestry, Chris McMaster, and for Jack, I just, I'm, I'm grateful for those situations. And good job, Jack. Just thought I'd say shout out.
Thank you. Vice President Musich?
Pass.
Pass. And I'll just comment that I went to the Lynn Hurst Neighborhood Annual Meeting. And Andy Schilling of the planning staff was there, and he had some easels up and was answering questions about the Lynn Hurst Park Playground. And also, you know, it was an off-site meeting because there was alcohol. And we were at a restaurant. And, but also Park Director John Doll showed up. And that's pretty cool that, you know, it's like in the evening and it's not at his park, but it's his neighborhood. So I appreciate that. And then I also, for the second year in a row, I believe, I slung some chili, is that what you call it, at Bryant Square Park for their neighbor, the South Uptown Neighborhood. It's an annual event. I think they use it to raise money. And that's just really fun. So, okay, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
All right. Well, the time being seven fifty-four, I will call to order the Administration and Finance Committee. Secretary, can you please call the rule?
Commissioner Elber?
Present.
Commissioner Forney?
Here.
Commissioner Rucker?
Here.
Vice President Schaefer, or sorry, Vice Chair Schaefer?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would someone like to move our agenda? All, all in favor of our agenda is listed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Would someone like to move our, our minutes?
I will move the minutes of November fifth and of February nineteen, oh, November, November sixth, excuse me. That's my birthday. Anyway, twenty twenty-four and February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five of the Administration and Finance Committee.
Thank you. All those in favor of adding the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have minutes. All right. We have one resolution before us. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, Resolution approving memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Minnehaha Park for Minnehaha Regional Park.
Thank you. I, I don't want to prolong our meeting at all, but, but would, yes, Commissioner, Vice President Musich?
I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. The Friends of Minnehaha Park is a newer stewardship group in the organization. They've been doing a ton of really important restoration work within the park and have really stood up a lot of volunteers very quickly. And they've also very patiently worked with us on developing what I'm hopeful will be the gold standard for how we move forward in entering MOUs with our friends groups. And it's really well put together. It's covering a lot of things that we should be covering in agreements like this. And it's setting a standard so that there's something that, a blueprint for us to follow for other groups that want to do similar work. So thank you not only for the work that you've done so far, but also to help us support groups like yours in a, in a more comprehensive and beneficial way moving forward. That's really all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. That was, I was going to ask if, I know that there's, is, I don't, is there a presentation about this? Is there, are there comments? Could we see what this is? I'm excited about it, too. This is exciting. And I appreciate it coming forward.
Chair Thompson, commissioners, there is a brief presentation. It doesn't do much more than tell you about the sections of the MOU. But I do want to take a moment to introduce Susan Glenn. She has been here for the meeting. She is the one who started all of this. And I would love her just to be able to share a few words with you.
Yes, please. Please.
Thank you for allowing me to share a few words. My name is Susan Glenn. I'm Chair of Minnehaha, Friends of Minnehaha Park. We were founded in April twenty twenty-three, and we hit the ground running and got a stewardship agreement that was approved by the Park Board June of twenty twenty-three. Since that time, we formed a board, increased membership. We became a five oh one C three in March twenty twenty-four. To date, we have, we have three hundred fifty-five volunteers that participated in, in events last year. And we held fifty-one buckthorn removal events that volunteers worked eleven hundred seventy hours doing stewardship in the park. Our main tasks are, well, let me just read the mission statement, and I'm not going to be long. The Friends of Minnehaha Park will provide stewardship and advocacy for Minnehaha Regional Park, engage with the community to respect and learn about the environment and cultural history of the park, and partner with the Minneapolis Park and REC Board and community to foster public engagement in restoring and sustaining the natural environment. So we do educational opportunities through nature walks, speakers, but primarily, we're, we're working, and we worked last year on stewardship through buckthorn removal. We worked, we had twice a week buckthorn removals most of the year. And also partnered with the Park Board on planting native plants, shrubs, and seeding, and also on the bio blitz at Minnehaha Park. So we had a very busy year. And also last year included working with Deputy Superintendent Ringold. And we appreciate all the effort you took in helping us develop an MOU so that we can strengthen our relationship with the Park Board and allow us to apply for grants and deepen our impact. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Would you, Chair Thompson, like any more information for the committee?
I'm incredibly grateful. I, I would like to say to Ms. Glenn, you actually wouldn't know this, but just a few months ago, I, I reached out to staff and I said, we have to do something about Minnehaha Falls. And, and that's when Deputy Superintendent Ringold told me about your group. I wasn't even aware that you had been forming, and it sounds like you're at a breakneck pace. So I look forward to working with you in whatever capacity that, that looks like. And I want to thank you for that work. If there's anything else that you'd like to share, I would, I would absolutely, otherwise I don't want to put you on the spot. Thank you for being here.
Well, I do have at a glance that you can share about some of our dates and numbers and accomplishments. Brilliant. I will hand that out. This is meant to be to Commissioner Musich's, or Vice President Musich's point.
Vice President Musich has reminded me, we should get that in the mic, that we have it on record.
I will, the, the, yes, I will be passing out the Friends of Minnehaha Park at a glance to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Also to Vice President Musich's earlier comment, this is intended to be, I'll do this so that you can see it in its better form. This is intended to be a layer within our suite of agreements that we can have with organizations, with the park stewardship agreement being kind of a annual, more of the easier entry opportunity, all the way up to something like an operating agreement where there's a group actually operating within the system. So this is intended to be a step in that process.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Oh, sorry. Yes, Commissioner Forney?
I just really want to thank you for your work. And I feel embarrassed and everything, but say hi to Mark.
Oh, yeah.
Her husband I worked with, what, forty years ago?
I love that. Yes, thank you for your work and thank you to everyone. I, I think it's really important, too, as like a, a larger piece to this, not necessarily about the Friends of Minnehaha Falls. But as Vice President Musich mentioned, and Deputy Superintendent Ringold has put in work for, to, to try to offer us a template also of, of what, what the MOU process might look like and how this would be for outside organizations. So signal lights on our only item. All those in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And with that, I will adjourn Admin Finance.
I will reconvene then the Planning Committee. And we were at the resolution regarding Cleveland. And if somebody would like to read that, I'd appreciate it. And then ask the question of whether or not you want a presentation.
Oh, I will move Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, a resolution approving the final concept plan for Cleveland Park Phase Two improvements, a part of the north service area of Minneapolis.
I personally would like to, so.
Absolutely. If there's a presentation.
I think we're ready to be presented.
Welcome, Kristen.
And Cliff.
Okay, one second. Commissioner, Commissioner Benny isn't here. And Chair Forney and commissioners, thank you for giving me a chance. We're just getting technical difficulties worked out here. But I am happy to be here to share improvements that we're planning for Cleveland Park and our concept plan that we're hoping to get approved. Just a second. Oh, there we go. We've been working for, since last spring on coming up with a plan for Cleveland. And, great. I think I can do this. I'll bring this over here. Thank you. Sorry. All right. And I'm really happy to be here to share kind of what we've come up with. I'll just go into kind of sharing what the park looks like right now. We have several different amenities. We've already made some improvements in twenty nineteen to the playground. And we're kind of working on how to implement things from our long-range plan for the park, given that there are some larger, bigger picture things that will happen in the future when, with land acquisition. So we're kind of trying to work with that, work within that since we don't, we're not doing that yet, and come up with what things we can do that make the park better for all the users. So this is the approved park plan. Many of you might have seen this. And we're working on, we started with more community engagement. We have about a million total to work on this project and about nine hundred fifteen thousand for actual construction. We started with community engagement, as we always do. We wanted to get a sense from the community, similarly to how I brought forth Farview, we wanted to understand like, what should we prioritize first in this first phase of improvements? So we worked on getting a sense of that from the community. We went to the Lucy Craftlini Elementary School. They have a huge event, and we talked to like over a hundred and we talked to, like, over 100 people, um, and that was really fabulous. We heard from all different people. A lot of the people live around that park, um, and all the kids that actually play in that park on every single day. Um, we also did an online survey and, um, sent out postcards to the community around the park. Um, after we kind of came up with a sense of the scope, we, of what we should be focused on, we went back to the community. We had a open house. We had some people come to that. It was kind of difficult because it's winter time. Um, we also sent out postcards again, and then one of my favorite parts was we went back to the school, and I met with their, um, Student Ambassador Program, and they have about 10 kids that are amazing, and they gave us a bunch of feedback on what we were planning and a lot of really good ideas, and we were able to implement a lot of those. And I hope to continue to actually work with them, um, when we actually implement, uh, the, the project, hopefully. Um, from that feedback, we heard, uh, we were able to kind of hone in the scope, as I said, and focus on some very specific things. One of the exciting things was, one of the improvements that was top of the list for the community was more natural areas. And if you've been to that park, you understand that it's a lot of field and a lot of turf. Um, and kids actually want to see plants and flowers, and they want to be a part of that. And that was something we heard from the youth, um, at that ambassador program, was that they wanted, they were like, "We want a nature walk. We want places to be in nature," which is really wonderful. So, I'm really happy with this plan because I think we're going to be able to kind of do that. Um, we also will be making improvements to the basketball court. Um, and the other thing that was really big was this adult fitness idea. Um, there's some other things that we looked at and explored, and then based on the budget, kind of figured out what we could, what we can actually implement. Um, we're able to do a lot of the things that came up, um, as priorities with our budget. Um, and this is the plan, and it's a little small. I'll just zoom in a little bit. Um, just to focus on what we're planning to do here. Um, based on that feedback, we're focusing on, uh, one full court basketball court, which was high priority. Um, there is currently two half courts. They're getting kind of to the end of their life. The first picture I showed was one of the courts. Um, and we also, the, the kids especially, wanted another half court. Um, and then the other thing that we're implementing is a bank shot, um, which is the first one I've kind of done, and it's basically a place where kids can learn how to, uh, it's a game, but it also is a way to kind of like build your skills in basketball. Um, the other things we'll be working on is really improving that field and making one multi-use field. Currently, there's a diamond. Um, we met multiple times with our PAC, which is our, um, Planning Advisory Committee, so youth athletics. This park is really underutilized. The plan shows future, the diamond going away and making really more of a multi-use field, which is going to function, I think, really well for the community, especially the school. Um, we also are implementing that, this, uh, we're calling it Ninja Course because the kids kind of know what that means, but it's a challenge course, and I'll kind of go into a little bit more of that with some pictures to kind of give you a sense of those things. Oops, let's see. Uh, I don't know why it's not going to the next page. Okay. Um, I'll zoom out a little bit. So, do, these are just some kind of images of those improvements, um, and I'll just go to the pieces that are a little bit less self-explanatory. So, we're calling it adult fitness, but I really, we're working with our staff to kind of come up with things that find, um, amenities that kids can do, too. Um, and we've found some really good options that use your, uh, body weight rather than, like, um, adjustable kind of fitness equipment that you use at a gym, and that will be way more accessible to kids. Um, so we're working on kind of figuring out what that will look like. Um, and one of the things that was really cool was that the, the, the school, um, community event, we had a lot of, uh, the athletics people that were managing all their programs. They gave us a lot of good feedback on this, too, so that was really helpful, and they really were in support of this. Um, then, um, I guess I don't really have a good picture of the bank shot, but I think that's not needed. Um, and then we will also be looking at implementing this amphitheater idea, but it's probably going to be a future phase. Um, but we'll, we'll still look at whether or not we can do it in this current phase. And again, we'll be working with forestry to understand what the, there's not a lot of tree cover in this park, so we would definitely be implementing more trees, like, and, um, we're working to reduce any kind of tree removal. Um, that's all I have, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? I see people reaching. Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, Chair Forni. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. Um, for the multipurpose field that is being implemented here, will it have irrigation?
No, it will not. It currently has an irrigation system that doesn't work. Um, we're not planning to irrigate it. Um, that would, we can explore that, but it wasn't something that our PAC really was needing us to do at this time.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Commissioner Thompson.
I just wanted to thank you for this. Uh, I know this park pretty well, and I'm excited about the new skate park going in. Um, and I know a lot of people who are in that neighborhood, and in fact, I, when I was first elected, I, there were people in the neighborhood who wanted the skate park facility set, and like, it's slated to go in at Cleveland, so it's exciting. I have no questions, but I just wanted to say thank you for your work, and the engagement at Lucy Lanning and Noah is a very big deal because you're going to capture a lot of neighbors, so thank you.
Um, and no other lights? Okay, uh, I'll just comment. Um, a constituent, which I have to admit, happens to be my niece, who's a master gardener. Anyway, um, she works for the, uh, school system, and, um, somebody reached out her, um, from Cleveland's school and is very interested in orchards. And as far as the trees that are being, hopefully, uh, specified here and everything, encourage if there was any way of, of, um, putting fruit trees in, that would be really, and, I mean, to me, yeah, trees, because we need, um, canopy color, you know, um, shade, I guess is the word I'm trying to say and everything. So, anyway, but it's very exciting, and I really want to know what a ninja course looks like. Anyway, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, um, those in favor of our Resolution 2025-35, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. On to our next resolution.
I'll move Resolution 2025-32, Resolution Removing the Term Master Plan from All Official NPRB Documents.
Any questions? Would you like a presentation on this? I would like it, actually.
Commissioners, I was hoping for that. I worked very hard on this. But I also know it's late. Um, Chair Forni, Commissioners, um, I bring before you tonight, um, this is, there's actually going to be kind of two things I'll talk about tonight that really have to do, um, with words and language. And the first of these is, um, really reconsidering the term "master plan" as we use it pretty regularly in our systems. Um, uh, and yet, it's, it's a sort of a problematic language that we want to address. So, um, uh, I just have a brief presentation here, and then we'll stand for questions. Um, so I think the first question I would ask, or others ask, is why do we take this action? Um, so there are many agencies that are reconsidering the language that they're using to interact with the public, and also to communicate about planning processes as they go forward. The term "master plan" itself has raised questions about race, about public input, and about legibility of planning processes. So, specifically, the term "master plan" has raised concerns due to its connection with the history of slavery in the United States. This was something that, for us at the Park Board, came out specifically in the Cedar Isles Master Planning Document, which, which actually is not called a master plan, so I just, yeah, it's going to be breaking habits if you decide to move forward with, with this. But the Cedar Isles Plan, um, does not use this term, um, and it was in part because of community members coming forward and saying they wanted a different way to describe that planning process. But also, I think that this term connotes the general public's inability to impact decision-making. Master being sort of the one in charge, uh, the one who makes all the decisions. It does suggest that NPRB is controlling the process completely. I know in planning, we seek an authentic and community-engaged process, and so this term tends to set us apart as the ones who are the decision-makers, and that's not exactly true in our processes. Lastly, and perhaps practically, this term is actually not always very well-understood by the public. So, we describe it a lot, exactly what is this thing that we're doing? And so, we think that there could be a more descriptive term. And I just will note that other agencies are considering this also. In fact, the Metropolitan Council, um, is providing guidance to not really use this term anymore when we bring regional park and trail plans forward. Um, their recent Regional Parks Policy Plan changes a lot of the language around, uh, what they now used to call master plans. So, what will we call these plans instead? So, the action before you, we're not asking you to determine the name for every past, present, and future planning effort. I think that's something that, um, you know, staff can do the homework and figure that out. We will develop specific guidance and a key list that links the old and new names of these documents. The broad intent here is to have the document and process have names that are more descriptive of what's actually happening and then what they're actually governing. So, a couple of examples, for instance, we have a document called the North Service Area Master Plan. Uh, we might rename this the North Service Area Parks Plan, um, and I think that'll be more legible to the public. Um, or even more simply, the Minnehaha Parkway Regional Trail Master Plan could simply become the Minnehaha Parkway Regional Trail Plan. So, some agencies are using the term "long range" all the time. We may choose to do that, but it also is simple to just say that we're doing park planning. So, how do we operationalize this? Seems like a lot of work. This word appears a whole lot. So, we're going to do that strategically and without a lot of staff input. I do want to, um, just make sure that we're clear that changing the names of these documents, even, yes, retroactively, does not modify the policies contained therein or the background. We're just changing the names, not the policies that were adopted already. So, in general, we're going to use new names. If this is, if this passes your approval, we'll use new names for current and future planning efforts. We're already starting to do this. We will develop, as I mentioned, a key list of the old and new names, and then references to old documents in forthcoming documents, such as board actions that come before you, memoranda, we'll use that new name. So, instead of referring to, in the Cleveland Park Project, instead of referring to that as part of the North Service Area Master Plan, we will make sure that we're using the new name for that document. We're going to modify the digital and printed plans over time as capacity allows, probably focusing most on title pages so that people are seeing a document that describes what it actually is. We will, um, one of our, uh, first priorities would be to modify the primary webpages, so we can start to communicate on the planning website what these are called. And then those public policies and administrative policies that refer to master plans will change during their normal review and update process. Um, so that's the proposal, and I stand for questions and discussion.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, uh, Chair Forni. I just have one question. I'm curious, did we need to do this at a board level, or could it just have been changed?
Um, Chair Forni, Commissioner Thompson, it's a really good question, and it's actually one that I, I've thought about for quite a while, which is, this is happening later than I hoped that it would. It's our feeling in planning that for, kind of for safety's sake, the board did adopt plan documents, and those plan documents have names. Um, and so, because they were adopted documents, we do want to ask you to change their names globally, rather than just doing that ourselves with a memorandum.
So, that's sort of an abundance of caution, make sure that it's done up here.
Uh, Chair Forni, Commissioner Thompson, one could say that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's my only question.
Any other questions? Um, somewhere in the, um, background, um, you use the word "vision," and I would really, really strongly encourage that because I feel kind of like, you know, what we just did with, um, the mall and everything. Too often, "plan," I believe that constituents think it's etched in stone, whereas "vision," I think, is really, truly what the whole process is about. Is this is what we envision for the future, and we know that we check back, you know, when we are about to move forward and everything, and codify it or whatever. And, and so I would really encourage that use instead of the word "plan." Um, I know it's what's typically used across whatever agencies and everything, but, um, to me, I just, that really grabbed me, and I really appreciate you putting it in there because it does really, um, articulate, I think, what our process is about. Um, it, it is about, think big, think, you know, grand and, and, and have a vision for things. So, anyway, I really appreciate this. It's long overdue, and, um, hurrah, anyway. So, not seeing any other lights. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Okay, on to our next resolution.
I will move Resolution 2025-44. Resolution approving renaming XL Field Park to XL Energy Park.
Great. Any questions? Any, don't see any lights, okay? All those in favor, excuse me, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Whoop, whoop, ah, here we go. Okay, finally, study item. Okay, back to Director Arviston about Sibley Park renaming update.
Chair Forni, Commissioners, um, thank you again for the opportunity, um, to discuss something that has to do with language and names. Um, you know, I, I do want to acknowledge that obviously this item was discussed during, uh, during open time, um, and I want to go into a little bit more detail about, uh, where we are in the process, um, and then, um, actually offer a potential way forward for your discussion. Because this is a discussion item, you won't take action, but, um, staff could really use some board guidance on this topic, uh, as we, as we try to move the process forward. Um, so as I mentioned, background, uh, staff proposal for next steps. So, just, um, a somewhat rapid-fire overview of where we are, and this is not all the time points that have occurred, but the discussion around Sibley Park dates all the way back to 2016, when initially Sanford Middle School students stood here and voiced their interest in exploring a name change. They, um, uh, some of them played at the park. They had done research as part of a school project, and they learned about the history of violence perpetuated against the Dakota people by Henry Hastings Sibley, one of the first governors of Minnesota. Um, and, uh, they wanted the name to be changed at that time and asked the board to do so. Um, it wasn't until 2021, when we initiated a capital improvement project at the park, that we began to also simultaneously ask for community input about the name. During that engagement, the online survey results and other engagement were solidly in favor of renaming the park. That was the first of several engagement phases that have taken place. Continuing on in '21 and '22, there was additional naming for park renaming, for the additional engagement for park renaming, including some focus groups. Um, uh, and I believe that's when some of the indigenous neighbors who live near the park, uh, started to get involved in that process. Again, there was another online survey as well as in-person engagement, um, and overwhelmingly, again, folks favored honoring the Dakota people and their history by naming the park in some way, um, uh, to recognize that. In 2022, on the heels of that recommendation to utilize a Dakota name or to honor Dakota history, um, we did send a consultation letter to the Dakota Tribal Councils. We also consulted with local, with local Dakota and other indigenous neighbors. There was a focus group at the park. Um, and then a potential park name came forward, Chantet Tisa Wiam, which means "strong-hearted women," as we've heard from individuals today talking about that. Um, this was proposed by indigenous community members living near the park. Um, and there were also, at that same time, some other possible names were translated into Dakota for community consideration. And then we did another survey and another round of engagement. And there were two names that kind of rose to the top of that list. They were very close in the total numbers, and those two names were Chantet Tisa Wiam and Oshkopah, which means a basin or bowl shape, referring to the current, um, situation of the park in the neighborhood. Um, based on that, um, the initial engagement, um, we, we thought had been done to a level of satisfaction that we could bring to the board as staff, an actual resolution to officially enter into nomination the name Chantet Tisa Wiam. So, that was done on 10, for, on October 4th of 2023. Normally, that would start the process for having public hearings and to move through the formal naming process. Um, but soon after that, we began to hear some concerns about this particular name, and so we asked, um, the Deputy Superintendent to put a pause on that regular naming process until we had some additional conversations. In 2024, um, somewhat coinciding with that, NPRB initiated its Indigenous Reconciliation and Action Planning, and also established the Native Parks Advisory Council at that time. So, the current context where we are right now today is that we do know that there are Dakota community members and leaders that have raised concerns about the name of Chantet Tisa Wiam. I'm not going to go into exactly what all those concerns are today because I don't want to paraphrase, paraphrase anyone or put words into their mouth, but we just know that there's been a lot of discussion about it. been a lot of discussion about it, and that there has been some concerns raised, including with the Native Parks Advisory Council, who are also raising questions about a Dakota naming process itself. So how do we go about choosing a Dakota name? How do we go about full consultation around that? We are working toward revisions of our naming policy that is being led by the deputy superintendent, and also to create a process for determining how to use indigenous names. So that's going to be a part and parcel of that process. And in general, we understand that the Native Parks Advisory Council generally feels that the process should be established first when we're dealing with Dakota names, and then that process should be applied to the naming of Sibley Park. However, or and, as I put here, and, most everyone agrees that the Sibley name should be changed for reasons that I stated at the beginning of this presentation and won't reiterate now. And many people, especially our indigenous community members, do actually feel the current name is hurtful and damaging, and it limits their ability to interact wholesomely with the park. Every time they go there, they're seeing this name, and that name can be harmful to them. So the current context is that determining an appropriate Dakota name for the park will take time, potentially years. And, as has been stated in this room tonight, it has been more than eight years since concerns with the current name were raised, and four since we began to work, since we began work to change it in earnest. That's already a long time. And people are hurting right now because of the name that's on the park and that's on the sign. So a possible solution, and this comes through conversations internally and externally, that I want to propose tonight, is number one, to just simply unnamed Sibley Park soon, to do that soon. And then secondly, we need to, for practical reasons, create a temporary name for the park, for the purposes of registrations, field reservations, management. That park could simply be called the Fortieth Street Park as an interim placeholder. And then number three, to take the time needed to complete the naming policy and then do full consultation with Dakota stakeholders and other indigenous stakeholders. I want to note that planning staff has floated this concept, this possible solution, with internal departments, because obviously, when we do something like this, we need to ask about how this is going to affect the workload of other staff. So what I have heard is that staff feel that there's likely to be some redundant work to change our systems to address possibly two different names over time. So if there's a temporary name, we still have to have ActiveNet and our reservation software and all of that, that has to change to that temporary name, then we'll have to change again to the final name. So there is some additional work, but no fatal flaws have been discovered, just so long as the park always does have some name attached to it. It needs some kind of name. So this proposal potentially balances the desire to eliminate the Sibley name from the park with the desire to proceed deliberately and carefully through an indigenous-centered naming process, which is what we're trying to do, and that is proven to be a very long process. So that's what I wanted to share with you, to bring you all up to speed and to put on the table for your discussion and questions tonight. And with that, I will return it to you, Chair Forni.
Commissioner Olson.
Sorry, thank you for letting me speak. I'm not on this. I'm wondering if you could maybe go into a little more detail of what the concerns around, from the Advisory Council, exactly were around the process for Dakota naming? Is it, just so we're not like just picking random words from a dictionary, like you have like, you know, sometimes you'll get like a tattoo in like Mandarin or whatever, and it says something completely different, and is it like that sort of thing, or is there other issues with it? I'm just kind of curious.
Chair Forni, Commissioner Olson, I'll try to do, I'll try to do my best here, but, and I will apologize to anyone listening in this room or otherwise if I misstate some of the nuance of what we've heard. I think there are concerns about, let's just say, the linguistics of the name, and also the orthography of how it's, how it's being spelled, and whether the words are exactly the right words to represent the phrase "strong-hearted women." So there's a, there's potentially linguistic work that needs to be, that needs to be done. Dakota was not historically a written language. There is now an orthography, and we just have to be careful to make sure to get that correct. I think there's been some concerns raised about the process for naming parks and how the Dakota people might do that versus how we have to date done it. So there's a process question. And I think, thirdly, the sort of sphere of concerns that I've heard raised, excuse me, the sphere of concerns is that this is a very powerful and important potential name, strong-hearted women, which is a good thing. However, this is not particularly an important or notable aspect of our landscape, this particular park. And so is the name out of scale with the importance of the space it's being attached to? And I don't think people are saying that it's not, but I think we're hearing that that has to be also investigated alongside the other two that I've raised.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Chair Forni. Fun fact, in the robust year of 1988, my alma mater went through this kind of process, and we went a year without a mascot. I say the year not to date myself, but because I'm actually proud of Minnehaw Academy taking that on early. That being said, it was, it was, it was a, I'm cautious of this idea of a blank space of time with no name or a temporary name. I personally am not opposed to this idea, but I would be very cautious that we have a timeline in place, not just for our naming policy. Maybe there's a resolution that would fast-track once we come up with a name, you know, I don't know, I'm spitballing here. But I appreciate the depth of concern, and I also, I know that for community members and for registrations and just, you know, neighbors who want to name their local park, right? Names stick, people get connected to them, and so this temporary thing, I just would, I would love it to be, if that were a way that we would pursue it, I would love to have very clear timeframes of like, this will be for one year, or this is going to be for two years, and we have the deadline of it's going to be renamed by blah. That, those are my two cents, and I, temporary name Squirrel Park would be much appreciated. Sorry. I'll push that forever. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate the sensitivity to this, having gone through the renaming of Bade Makaska and everything. It certainly has raised my awareness, particularly of, I might be speaking out of turn or I don't know whatever, but understanding that naming is not something that is, shall I say, the normal act of the indigenous community. And, and, it's a white frickin' thing. Anyway, so how we approach this, I think, is very, very important, and I want to make sure that it's done respectfully. So I would encourage us to, as you say, unnamed. I'm sorry, when I go to the airport, I go to Terminal One or Terminal Two, which is, you know, horrible, but it, whatever, if we have to just put a frickin' number or squirrel or whatever, but I agree, let's rip off the name as fast as we possibly can and respectfully bring forth an appropriate name. So anyway, so I really, really appreciate the sensitivity on this, and I certainly hope those who are recording this and everything realize, we want it ripped off as fast as you do. So, but the other thing I need you to know, government is frickin' slow, and, but hopefully, when we do finally make the move, it's a good one. So anyway, thank you. Not seeing any other lights and everything, and being this is, oh, it is. No, it's a study item. Okay. I declare the meeting adjourned here at 8:37.
I would just like to add, I see a couple more of your parks to add, like Cleveland Park and Jackson Square. They got to go. Read about Andrew Jackson. Just take a minute, read about Andrew Jackson, what he did for our people. Look at Cleveland, and now he's supported the DARZ Act. So it's taken 10 years practically to do one name. We need to line them up and get them all done at the same time, because they are our next.
Thank you.
Not stopping. And I appreciate all you guys are doing to try to get it done fast, not fast enough. Thank you.